There we are. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, so I am going to call this August 27th City Council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, Councilwoman Loy.
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cox.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca.
Here.
Welcome, everybody. Okay, moving on to item number D, approval of the agenda. Before I ask for an approval, we are going to add executive session. And we are going to move the stormwater from the information to the unfinished business. We've actually had a couple of presentations on this, but not the last presentation. So I really appreciate the fact that Kyle felt it was important that you get to hear it and see the slideshow. So, and we're going to move that from information to unfinished business. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, to approve the agenda with the addition of a executive session and to move stormwater from information to unfinished business. Thank you very much. Moving on to consent agenda, items one through six. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Fantastic. Okay, now we're on to item E, consent agenda, items one through six. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Madam Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Cox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, motion carries. Item F, introduction of special guests and presentations. First on the agenda is the swearing in of Officer Noah Cook. Could I get Officer Cook to come forward?
Always good. Always good to see somebody come on the police department. So, Officer Cook, can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Noah Cook.
I, Noah Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitutions and the laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And will do with the best of my judgment.
And will do with the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Cedar Wully.
In and for the city of Cedar Wully.
Skagit County, Washington.
Skagit County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right. We also have a couple of presentations. The first up is Children of the Valley. And tonight, we have Jessica Rodriguez and, is, right? Okay, thank you. And, I lost my place here. And Star Torres.
Good evening, my name is Star Torres. I'm here to say-
Is the blue light on? I just want to make sure the blue light is on. Yes.
Oh, there it is.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Star Torres. I am the site coordinator at a Cedar Wully site for Children of the Valley located at the Immaculate Heart of Mary. At our site, we currently serve 30 students every day after school. And this fall, we are excited to expand by opening a third classroom that will allow us to serve students who have been on our waiting list. The children who come to our program are among those in our community who need the most support. Many are unhoused and nearly face significant challenges, whether behavior, social, or meeting their most basic needs. Our goal is to provide them with a safe, structured, and caring space where they can thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. To get started, we're going to show you a short video about a little bit about our program.
I know you just gave him the program. I don't know if he's loading it or what.
Next slide?
Next slide, Woody?
Oh, there we go. And then that is the video.
Okay.
Go ahead and push play.
This idea that was started by a schoolteacher from our community really has had a ripple effect. You know, if we can break cycles of poverty in a community and in a family by supporting them in their child's education, but also supporting the family unit, then provide opportunities that the child would never have beyond high school if it wasn't for our program. And I think that's what's exciting to see, is that if we didn't have COV, like where would the child and the family be?
When I was younger, like their age, I felt like being a teacher or just anything that required any type of, you know, higher education felt like impossible because I would look around and I wouldn't see anybody that shared my background in my position.
My family, a fortunate enough to be part of the COV. Because I have two children and have the opportunity to continue the goal that they want to achieve. They're children. My son, my youngest, has six years. And he says, "I want to be a teacher." It's motivating. When I look at volunteers, it motivates me. "I want to do that too." It's what they admire, the teachers and volunteers. Because they're kind to the children.
The way it feels here is definitely warm and welcoming. My daughter is getting more interested in reading books. Before, reading was a challenge for her. And with the help alongside the staff members here in her reading class at school, she loves to read.
As a site coordinator, I get to see a lot of our students grow academically, socially, emotionally. I make classrooms every day, seeing them read, write, do positive action.
I have students in my classes that are part of COV, and they are always talking to me about volunteers or like teachers that work with them now and of how much they share the same background. Or I have students that are in the bike club.
We want to continue to support our students through their K-12 education. We're really excited that we've just expanded to serve our middle school students. And we are doing that through partnership with the Cascade Bicycle Club and offering a bike club for our middle school students where they have the opportunity to earn a bike. But still, in the club, we're focused on academic assistance, we're focused on social-emotional learning, and we're exposing them to learning about using bikes as a mode of transportation. We also, last year, launched our Dream Big Scholarship. And the Dream Big Scholarship is designed for former COV students to know that they know there's an opportunity for funding because we know that's a challenge and a barrier for many of our students is, how am I going to pay for college? For us, we want them to be contributing members to the community, to come back and to be that doctor, that lawyer, that teacher that they dreamt of being, and we're seeing that with our kids.
We are dreaming big, and I honestly think it's because of COV and the opportunities they give us.
As we pour our time and energy into children, we will see the results. I am positive of that, and I've seen that play out again and again.
Very nice.
We have the next slide. So, just a little bit about our program. Children of the Valley started 19 years ago as a program in Bethany Covenant Church. And we've been serving students there. And then we expanded briefly into, or quickly into Cedar Wully and as well as Burlington as well. I can't really see this slide. Next slide. Our program, like I said, we are in the Mount Vernon School District, Burlington, Edison School District, Cedar Wully School District, and as well, we serve Conway students in the Mount Vernon sites also. So we currently have four sites with 11 classrooms in our program, serving over 200 students. Next slide. We, like we had mentioned, you'd seen in the video, we also have a continuity of care, which is we are focusing on a middle school program. Many of our middle school students aren't ready to leave our program. And so they are wanting to come back in waves and be a part of our program, but don't want to be a part of the after-school setting. So we offer a bike club. And we're actually launching the first one here in Cedar this fall with Cascade Middle School. Yeah, and we're starting, so we'll start with 15 students, and they'll have the opportunity to earn a bike as part of the program as well. And they'll also be, get it supported academically and also do volunteer hours also. Next slide. Children of the Valley is based on five cornerstones of care. So these are what our program is built on, the foundation of our program. Our first one is academic assistance. Can I have the next slide? So our students are referred to us by their schoolteachers and counselors and administrators. So that's what kind of sets us up. We're referral-based and free to our families. So every day, they do receive 30 minutes of academic reading support and as well as homework support after. The teachers let us know where our students are struggling and where we best can support them. So we come up with a one-on-one plan for our students. They also receive tutoring and support by our staff and volunteers. We have over 200 volunteers that come in to read with our students and help with their academic support as well. Next slide. Our next one is enrichment activities. So our main, one of our main goals is to provide enrichment activities that they may not receive elsewhere. So extracurricular activities, meaning sports, different sports clubs, field trips. They love to go to Bowman's Bay, experience that. We also do a Skagit Valley College field trip, and it's centered around dreaming bigs, getting them on college campuses, exposing them to those, and also we have intergenerational experiences. So we have lots of volunteers at different ages that come in. We have one lady that comes and teaches knitting, and she wants to teach the kids to knit. So she sits with our kids and knits with them. You know, we have snack preparers that come in and do that as well. Next slide. Social-emotional learning, this is a big piece that we know that sometimes our kids are struggling, you know, with other things at home and/or at school, and so we want them to come into our program and feel safe and supported. So we do partner with Cedar Wully Rise, who also helps us with, provide funding for the positive action curriculum. And we do 30 minutes of positive action curriculum with our students every day. And we also do daily check-ins with them, just to see how they are daily. As soon as they get there, the teachers and staff are always asking, "How are you feeling? What's, how was your day today?" Just so we can best support the student that day. Next slide. Family support as well, this is a big piece. We do provide family basic support and needs, if that's resources on how we can get best support them. If that's utility payments, if that's food. We do a Giving Tree every holiday where we get all of our families sponsored by our community members and donors so that they're able to have a joyous Christmas time and holiday season as well. And gift cards, we do lots of gift cards for food as well. Next slide. Mentorship as well. We partner with local, with local Skagit Valley College for Maysos and Nupueblo, and also Western Washington University for Compass to Campus. So we're getting students who are wanting to be in education to come into our classrooms and also assist us in their classrooms. So we're able to give experience to them as well as us being able to have another helping hand in there. So we have a strong connection with them. We also offer education training to a lot of our volunteers who want to be teachers. And so we're able to kind of give them that experience in the classroom. And like you watched in the video, we also have our Dream Big Scholarship that we offer to our volunteers, alumni, and also staff if they're continuing their education. Next slide. As you can see, these are our numbers of volunteers. We have range, a wide-range variety. We have over 6,700 hours of volunteers throughout the whole year. And over 204 volunteers that come into all of our sites, ranging from snack preparers, enrichment activities. We have transportation, they bus, or not bus, but drive our van home for students that who don't have transportation home to get them home safely. Academic support as well. Next slide. This is how we're funded. So Children of the Valley is, we're at approximately a million-dollar operating budget, and we are funded by our community. We were started by our community, and we're funded by our community. We don't receive other funding elsewhere. We just receive private grants, state and local contracts, individual donors and foundations, and in-kind support as well from like the school districts and other organizations. Next slide. So some of our current challenges that we're facing is, we have a growing waitlist. We have kids who have been on our waitlist and never get in because they kind of, they shift out of grade. You know, they start on our waitlist in third grade, and by the time they hit fifth grade, there's no longer a spot for them. So we have a growing waitlist on all of our sites and for, we have a list. We also have shared classrooms. So it's a great, part of COV is we are share spaces, right? We like to be at Immaculate Heart of Mary where there's empty church for the week. You know, no one's in there, so we share our space. But it also brings challenges. For example, our Washington site, we had our first and second graders in the cafeteria, sitting at cafeteria tables. It doesn't work for them. They're, you know, moving around a lot and not wanting to sit in a cafeteria chair. So we were able to move into a portable at that time, so now we have our own space there, which was great. Temporary funding. When we moved into Cedar Wully, we had superintendent Dr. Phil Brockman reach out to us and say, "Okay, we need your support here. We have students not attending school during COVID. What are we going to do? How can we support?" So we quickly shifted, opened up a site here, and, but now COVID relief funds are gone. And so now we expanded, opened up these classrooms, serving all these additional students. And now we're trying to figure out how to continually sustain them and not close our doors to our students and continue to grow and serve more students as well. Next slide. So we do have some expansion opportunities. We do have, we're hoping to be able to expand into Central Elementary soon. So that's our next expansion here in Cedar Wully, as well as, as Star had mentioned, opening a classroom, a third classroom this fall. Next slide. In addition to supporting our families, we like to dream big and stronger communities. So research shows that every dollar invested in the after-school program saves at least $3 by reduced crime, improvement at schools, performance at schools, and increased earning potential as adults. So an after-school program helps kids be off the streets and just be more interested in their education, having a safe place for them after school. And as well as increased earning potential as adults is that they have the motivation to continue their school, graduate high school, and continue a career path. Next slide. An additional goal is building stronger families, which is by utility and housing assistance, holiday gift baskets and food baskets, and school-related expenses. And this is what we do here in Cedar Wully. We have families who are in need of housing assistance, and COV helps them buy hotel vouchers, paying their utilities, and even their rent. We do have a single parent who is unhoused, and they are living currently at a campground. We help the family by paying the camp spa and providing food for them, and also giving the children transportation for them to go to school every day and able to come to COV. That allows, now, not only that has COV impacted the students, but they also impacted families. And I feel like personally, seeing this firsthand made me realize that that's just one family that we serve that is unhoused. And imagine all those students who we are unaware that are in the same situation that COV would like to support. Next slide. So here are some different ways to get involved. Like I mentioned, we're always looking for volunteers. It could be an hour a week, coming in to read with a student, or if you have a craft you want to do with our kids. We also are looking for snack shoppers or snack preparers. We do have a leadership circle, which consists of different businesses in our community that support us annually. Planned gifts. We have a fundraiser we have, a big auction every April, which is a fun event, and we'd love for you to attend. We do have our Amazon wishlist, and we currently have a back-to-school supply drive at Savvy Banks. And there's one here in Cedar. And also to donate, or even just to follow us on our social media, Instagram pages to show support for our program. Thank you. Next slide, I think we're done. Thank you, are there any questions? Thank you for allowing us to present tonight.
Go ahead, Madam.
I was just going to say, thank you for coming in. I had the chance to tour the site and actually meet all of you, and it was exciting. I had no idea, I'm embarrassed to say, I had no idea that you, you were here. And it had been, what, 19 years, you said, that you have been here?
Yeah, so we opened 19 years ago, but have been in Cedar, going on our fourth year.
Okay. And you said you're opening a second site here, which is Central, correct?
Yeah, we're planning, we're in the works of doing that, so.
Okay. Are there other areas in Cedar Wully that you're looking to expand?
We would love to. We haven't really looked into where else we could.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'd love to.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cox?
I was delighted to hear you're working with Compass to Campus. Do you actually have Compass to Campus tutors?
Yeah.
That teach the kids? Because those are college kids and-
Yeah, we do. We have Compass to Campus students that come in, they come in, you know, during the week that they're in class, and they come in weekly and are there with us, helping the teachers in the classroom, as well as interns. We have some interns that are serving on our staff as well from Western.
Well, Cindy Shepherd, who founded that program, I'm sure has a smile on her face.
Yes. We're so grateful for them. We have a large group, actually, that comes in to support us.
Are you going to the tour day, whenever that is? I don't-
I know we do have staff that go up there to do that.
We take kids too, right?
Oh, we do. We do take our students up there to Western, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful program. Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Burns?
I'm someone who's just starting my, my journey as a teacher, so I really appreciate what you're doing because preparing those kids, you're building a foundation for the rest of their lives by helping out with what you're doing. So thank you. You were talking about hoping to expand into, where is it, Cascade Middle School?
Uh, we're-
No, Central, sorry.
Yeah, Central, yeah.
How many children are you currently helping at Cascade? And how many do you plan on trying to serve at Central? Like, what's your model or-
So currently, we're in Immaculate Heart of Mary, and we have two classrooms. In each classroom, we serve about 15 to 18 students. So this fall, we'll open a third classroom, so it'll be an additional 15 to 18 there.
I see.
And then for the bike club, we serve a cohort of 15 students. So each of our kids, we do a small group in that group because they also earn a bike as well. And it's hard to take a large group of students on a bike ride, as you could imagine. So we need to have enough staff for our bike students. But if we were to open in Central as well, we'd probably open additional two classrooms, so it would be an additional 30 students.
Okay, so you are using the classrooms at the school?
No, we're at the church.
Or just the church?
Right now, we're at the church, yeah.
Thank you for clarification.
Yeah, no problem.
Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great job on everything you guys are doing. It's really impressive. And I know it touched a lot of hearts to be able to have that. When I was over at the teen center, the kids were talking about really wanting to see mentorship. So I was like, "Hey, what about the senior center?" And they're like, "Yeah." So I don't know if that ever got connected, but I know the seniors were excited about volunteering when having the opportunity. I was looking over the slide 104, and you were, it says that the operating budgets for 15 students is about $75,000 or $5,000 per student. How long do they spend with you after school?
They show up right after school, so they're bused immediately after school. So depending on what time the school is released, what time- 3:30? 3:30, and they're there till a little bit after 6:00. We're at 6:00 o'clock, their ending time, but usually it's a little bit after 6:00.
Is that five, five days a week?
Five days a week.
So about two and a half hours for five days a week?
And then early release as well, we're serving them as they arrive early.
So that's about, for 15 kids, $75,000 per classroom, you guys have two classrooms right now. Are you, is it the rent that's causing it to be so high, or?
No, we partner with Immaculate Heart of Mary, so we do, they don't charge us like technically rent, but we do cover utilities or other, you know, things of the church. But that is over all our entire program. So it's not, those numbers aren't just for Cedar, it's for our entire program.
Okay, but it's per class? So in general, like per class is-
So that also covers, you know, supplies and stuff as well for the student in that class.
So you guys have two classes right now, which is going to be $150,000, and you hope to add in one more, which would be an additional 75. So you're looking for like $225,000 around Cedar Wully?
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Councilwoman Diamond?
I just wanted to say thank you so much for what you guys do. I personally know families that have been positively impacted by your after-school program, and was wondering if by chance you would be starting or looking at a before-school program? If that's because several of the families that I know, you know, in production industry-type work have very early mornings, and some of the struggles that they had were with childcare first thing in the morning, in those early hours, you know, before they can get off to school. But a good, safe place for them to be able to go, some of them still need to do homework and check in and go from there. So I didn't know if that was going to be maybe part of, part of a future program or something that you guys have been considering, but just wanted to pass along personal firsthand information from people I know that have been impacted positively by you, but also some of the struggles that I'm sure you've probably heard already, that they also encounter.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, actually, it's funny that you say that because we keep hearing that, like, what about, is there any before-school support? So I feel like it could be something that we'd possibly look at in the future. I think our main focus right now is just sustaining what we have right now and then. But we do keep hearing, "What about before school? Do you offer that support?" So, because you're right, a lot of our families are leaving super early in the morning, and the kids are home by themselves. So, mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Cox?
Just, I was curious, do you all work or cooperate with the Boys and Girls Club? Because it sounds like they do some of the similar things, right?
Yeah, we, we are different than the Boys and Girls Club. We are a free program to our families, and then we are referred-based, so we work very closely with the school district. But we have partnered with Boys and Girls Club before. I know in order for us, when we expanded so quickly during COVID, we partnered with them because we had to open a full-day learning center.
Okay. And I know there's tremendous demand for the Boys and Girls Club too, so it's big on me.
Yeah, there's a huge demand. Like, our students are needing, our kids are needing in our communities, and there's just not enough areas or services, you know, for after-school care as well. Yeah.
Let's go ahead. Councilwoman Kestie?
I, I'd like to echo everyone as well, that thank you so much for what you do for our community and the children. I had a thought, because you were talking about the hotel vouchers, and we have the $1,590 funding, that maybe in years coming on, you might want to think about asking for that because that's what it can be used for. So, don't forget about us.
We won't.
Madam Mayor, if I may say one more thing?
Go ahead.
And so I just looked it up, and so childcare, just for two hours after school, is about $8,000 a year. So it could be anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000, but here in Western Washington, it could be very expensive. So it is a big blessing to a lot of the families around to not only get their kids tutored during that care, but also it's, it's cost-effective. So that might be something that you guys throw in there.
That's great. Thank you, Councilman. And I just wanted to add, I'm Renata Maybrick, I'm working with the COV and the Dream Big Campaign to sustain programming in Cedar Wully. And I just wanted to follow up on your initial comment on that $5,000 per student per year. That is the site coordinator plus the staff ratio of two staff per classroom, as well as transportation. We take the kids home every day, which is pretty amazing to be able, that is one of the biggest barriers that families face is that, you know, the program closes at 6:00, and they might not be, they might be working two jobs or very long shifts. And so having that transportation home means that they are able to attend, as well as purchasing all of the snacks. So they're able to have a healthy snack every day. So they're able to have a, a healthy snack every day, um, and then sometimes get sent home with additional food. And Councilwoman Cassidy, I want to thank you for suggesting that fifteen ninety, we are going to be applying for it because we have several families that are unhoused currently and are on the brink of homelessness, as well as, um, mental health and substance abuse issues. So being able to support those children with this after-school program is gonna be our request, um, uh, being submitted by Friday, Charlie. We know that, so, um, so thank you for this opportunity. It's pretty exciting that during COVID, that's, for, for me, I was a board member for many years of Children of the Valley and then now working, um, to help them sustain this through fundraising. But during COVID, it, you know, the COV met the need of the community in a way that was pretty unheard of. They, they opened, you know, Phil, Dr. Brockman said, can you come to Seidrow? We're desperate, we don't know what to do, we don't have Wi-Fi for our students, there's no, you know, there's not a safe place to be. And they started, they opened six AM to six PM, all through COVID. And we're all tired still from COVID, but you could imagine that the educators and, you know, the staff and that, the, um, social emotional support for those students during that time, I think, um, it allowed students to stay in school. Many students might have chosen a different pathway during that time. So really grateful to be able to have had the support during COVID with, you know, ARPA funds and Acer funds. But now to be able to sustain that and be able to meet the challenges of the kids is, is our opportunity.
That's fantastic. Um, it's so a way of being able to connect with Children of the Valley. Is there a website? Do you have information that you can actually share with us to?
Yeah, we do, um, we have our website, it's, uh, I can just give it to you, covmv.org. And you can find, um, all of our sites on there and information about our, our program on, on there as well. We also have our impact report listed on there under reports, if you're able to see that. And we are getting ready to do our new impact report this fall.
Fantastic. Wonderful presentation. So glad that you came in and made us all aware of what's actually happening within our community. It's fantastic. Thank you so much for your dedication and, oh my gosh, the lives that you are touching and changing, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you again for having us.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, we have, um, another presentation and this is also an exciting one because we're gonna be learning about the skateboard championship recap. So Carl DeYoung, do you want to share that with us?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chief and Staff. Uh, I'm Carl DeYoung, I'm one of the co-producers with, uh, Councilmember Loy, with the Seidrow Woolley Skateboard Challenge. And, uh, and I would like to start off with thanking, um, our, uh, elected participants. I'd like to thank, uh, the event poster creator, which was designed by Skagit PUD Commissioner Corinne Hamburger. Or Hamburg, she's, I'm, I'm dead now, Hamburg. And highlighting the regional leadership support and creative investment in the challenge. I'm so sorry, Corinne. Additionally, uh, we, as I had mentioned, um, uh, Councilmember Kevin Loy attended the entire event and Councilmember Joy Ellen Kessie stopped by, uh, despite a full schedule of other community commitments. And also Councilmember Nick Lavaca stopped by with some goodies and a tent that we thought we would need because of the weather report. In the past, both Councilmembers Ellen Henderson and Nick Lavaca have supported the challenge by providing free hot dog, uh, basket meals. And this reinforces the council's longstanding role in the event. Uh, we can go to the next slide, please. Okay, this is the preview, table of comments, next slide, thanks Woody. And we talked about the challenge begins, we talked about the, uh, poster. And also I'd like to thank Woody's involvement as well by helping us at the, um, pre-planning meetings and also being a participant and being a liaison with the participants. Here we have a nice overview, uh, shot of the park, um, during one of the past events. So it gives you the sense of the scale of the park and, uh, the different lines that, uh, the participants use. You'll also see in the upper left-hand corner, the bleachers that are used. And this is taken from, I believe, the roof of the fire department, um, not by me. Uh, I also would like to mention that all the photos that you will see today are open-sourced and public and most of them I took. Now we can move on to the next slide, please. Uh, yes, one of my favorite shots. This is, uh, our fire department with Chief Wagner on a board and supported with, uh, other firefighters. I would like to thank, uh, the firefighters for coming out and, uh, providing free bicycle helmets to anyone that asked, uh, because safety was so important for all the participants. Uh, when we got into the challenge part, everyone was required to wear safety equipment, including a helmet. During the open skater between the challenges, folks were, uh, could do what they wanted to do. Uh, we can go to the next slide because we also had community policing at its best. With, uh, this is an older shot from a past event where we had a police officer, um, ham it up on a skateboard. Uh, next slide, please. And, oh, so it, this is the spirit of competition, fair and fun. Uh, it's, I really enjoy this photo, not only with the flag, but also showing the ominous weather and people just being resilient to come out, uh, showing a family, uh, on a bicycle. And this, uh, we'll talk a little bit later about, but the fair and fun part, this is the beginners who had tied for first place. And, uh, they had to do a rock-paper-scissors-off in order to see who was gonna go first. And a special note, their brother and sister. And at the end, I'll let you know who won. Alright, next slide, please. Alright, here are volunteer judges up on the scaffolding and they had a blast. And, uh, none of the judges' decisions were questioned. I should also, uh, talk about our strong turnout. Our city administrator, uh, Charlie Bush, had estimated that there were over sixty attendees. And again, that the event was safe and positive throughout and there were no incidents reported, medical or otherwise. So next slide, please. These are our vendors and partners. Uh, two vendor booths participated, including, uh, local businesses like Hidden Wave Boards out of Burlington. And next slides, please, a long time, uh, well, uh, I'm sorry Woody, I'm gonna have you bounce back and forth. Next slide, please. And this is, uh, Madam Jeanne's Entertainment, she's known for karaoke setup. And, uh, she again did our public address. If we could go back one slide, Woody, thank you. This is a great shot. So this is a, uh, a shot from the past. This is Mr. Sandstrom and he, uh, was a participant in the past and this year, he was a vendor. And he was able to hand out stickers and, uh, t-shirts of his own design. And we really enjoyed that. And then we can just move ahead one slide, please. While no food trucks attended, like we'd planned, likely due to schedule conflicts with the Ca- uh, Concrete's Cascade Days and also with a very large basketball event in, uh, um, Mount Vernon, the vendor presence provided youth-centered, um, apparel and entertainment. We're gonna go to the next, okay, this is a fantastic shot. So, uh, this is, uh, our skate park story. This is a shot from twenty-eleven, right here in this, uh, area. And it all started with the youth. And they were brainstorming ideas of how to create it and what they wanted to see out of that skate park. So it's organic grassroots and something that they wanted to be part of. And it was well-attended and some of those designs, uh, made it into the final, um, um, creation. Let's go to the next slide, please. So this is a, a photograph, uh, as we know, the rotary was a big part of this, uh, endeavor. And I will also note that the Tony Hawk Foundation, uh, donated, uh, contributed some money to this as well. Here we have, uh, photos of the Shot Creek, uh, Shot Crete happening on the ramps, uh, et cetera. And it was just a large community event. And, uh, we can go to the next slide. And this is in twenty-twelve when they're, uh, making the park. These are Cascade Job Corps trainees at work. So we were able to, um, partner with the Job Corps in, in its iteration at that time. Next slide, please. Alright, and then this is the, uh, poster that was used for, uh, the grand opening of the, uh, park in twenty-twelve. The, uh, placard is still in place and some of the skateboarders took advantage of using that as, uh, part of their routines. And, uh, a lot of hand pivots happening on the rotary emblem. I thought it was kinda cool to use the gear. Next slide, please. Excellent. So, this is, uh, Dan Hughes. Dan Hughes runs a, uh, online magazine. He goes around the country to rate and skate, um, skate parks. And he is quoted as saying, "Our Seidrow Woolley Skate Park is one of the best in Washington." So it's something to take pride in. And what you'll also notice, if you go to his page, you'll see some patches here and some other skate parks. And a lot of, uh, other skate parks are just completely graffitied out and we don't have that problem, uh, to that scale at, at this park. Next slide, please. Right, so, uh, this is just the montage of shots I took, uh, of folks having fun with the precision and style. This guy was fantastic. Uh, next slide, please. Height and adrenaline, you can see the air he's catching here, which was fantastic. He picked a great line, uh, built up a lot of speed. And, uh, a lot of the younger folks and even the folks within his peer group are, uh, just in all of the performances he was able to provide. And you'll notice the difference there, that indeed he's wearing a hard hat here, or, um, he's wearing a, uh, helmet here and in the previous shot, he was not, and they were taking it two different occasions. This is during the official event. Uh, next slide, please. Right, so fearless risk-taking, right? Slow, uh, this is our fellow who's had, built up enough speed, um, and was, uh, flipping the board, uh, lengthwise as he was making the jump and trying to stick the landing. And it was great to see that creativity, people picking the lines and also showing the younger ones and people with not as much talent that this is something that they could achieve to, but also watching those advanced folks push each other, but staying within safety limits. Next slide, please. And, uh, this was just a fantastic shot. This is, uh, a young, uh, man, a teenager, who had such, such focus in picking his lines. And he showed such care, uh, during the open skate to make sure his lines were clear and safe and not to interact with any of the other skaters, especially some of the younger ones. Next slide, please. And another teenager riding the coping. There, uh, is a bit of the coping missing on, on the ramp. A lot of skateboarders now, uh, shoot for that spot in order to hang on the lip, uh, versus the protrusion of the coping. But it is something that, uh, might need a repair down the road. Um, next slide, please. Right, so father and son at the skate park. And that's something we just really wanted to reinforce, that this was a family event and, uh, we had a lot of fun and the music, uh, was family-appropriate. And we did not receive any, uh, negative comments, uh, about the event or closure of the street. Next slide, please. And back to this, so, um, who won this event? The brother or the sister? The younger or the older? The younger brother. Cause he was able to, to pull off, uh, more technical, um, uh, event, uh, tricks. And, uh, but, uh, the sister pulled off a lot of ollies, which is when, uh, you're able to try to, from a standing start, be able to kick it up and see how high you can go and write it down. And they were both very, very skilled and you could see why they tied. Next slide, please. And really, this is what we're looking for, is carrying on the spirit forward. And, um, kinda had, uh, I saw the shot, took it and I kinda had a, a good feeling about it and it was emotional and I wanted to share that with you folks. I think I've covered everything that, uh, I wanted to talk about here. Oh, uh, as to money, uh, Charlie, uh, confirmed the fiscal impact data on staff hours and ancillary city costs and that he can provide that for you. The challenge showcased beginner and advanced skaters alike, encouraged positive risk-taking and highlighted Seidrow Woolley's identity as a safe, active and supportive community. And that looking ahead, the challenge will continue to serve as a platform for youth engagement, healthy outdoor activity, small business envir- involvement and civic pride. So I've taken up a lot of time, but I'm, I could just go on and on about it, it was such a blast. Any questions I could help answer or direct?
That was really good. Thank you so much for bringing that forward and sharing that. And I'm sure there'll be some questions here. Don't run away just yet. Don't run away just yet. And I also want to give kudos to, um, Kevin Loy because I know that he's been involved in this for quite a while. And he actually, um, led the first one that happened a number of years ago. And, uh, he was also instrumental in working with getting the skate park in and so, you know, um, many thanks to you. Yes, Councilwoman Loy, for making that all happen. And Carl, keeping the consistency going, thank you. Thank you very much. Great pictures, great story. Councilwoman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you, Carl, for putting that together. That was impressive. You and, uh, you and Councilman Loy did a great job on it and so, uh, we weren't sure about the weekend. It's like, oh, is this gonna be pushed off till Sunday and is it gonna be worse? So, uh, great pushing through and I heard a lot of great things about it. So, um, I'm glad that it got done well and, and it was handled properly and everybody was safe. And then I do look forward to seeing this happen again next year. So, great job on that. I've heard a lot of good things.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. Thanks to you and Mr. Loy. It was awesome last year. Me and Councilman Lavaca had a blast, uh, cooking hot dogs, so, um, we definitely, it was a bummer that the food trucks weren't there this year, other commitments. And if you run into that problem, I'm sure we'd be, both be more than willing to cook some hot dogs again for the kids. A lot of fun. Thank you.
I, I will say that Hidden Wave came through with about a dozen pizzas. And then Nick's cookies were, were fant- uh, Councilmember Lavaca's cookies that were supplied were fantastic, so.
Yes, Councilwoman Kessie?
I just wanna thank you both as well because it's really nice when we can do really great events and showcase our wonderful city. And, um, I love the fact that Mr. Sandstrom was a participant and now an entrepreneur. And, um, that's just really awesome to see that you guys are creating that for them, so thank you very much.
Yes, Councilwoman Burns?
Appreciate you doing this. And, uh, Councilmember Loy, it sounds like you really helped get it started, so thank you for keeping it going. You mentioned that the coping needs repair in one section. Uh, is that something that we might be able to have a look at so we don't let it get worse?
Yeah, we, we do have a plan to take a look at that.
Fantastic.
We talked with Nathan about it today.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, if I could just add then, Nathan, um, is, uh, with Public Works has just been fantastic. The hours that he's spending there and knowing exactly where things need to be set up, just a joy to work with. And, uh, I believe wants to, uh, walk the, um, the course with some skateboarders to see exactly how they could, uh, help improve it and improve the maintenance. Um, I, I think with the guidance that, uh, Mr. Bush was able to give us with over a half dozen, um, pre-planning meetings, really helped, uh, keep us on, on the course and, uh, helped spawn a lot of creativity and a lot of ideas that were definitely out of scope. And then get us together and move forward to something that was sustainable.
Um, I think it, that it goes to show, so last year, great job, but this year, it ran a little more smooth. You've already determined where you're gonna tighten it up and where you're gonna push it forward. So, yeah, very nice job.
Thank you.
Very nice job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item G's, uh, city administrator report, SR nine roundabout project. Are we gonna, Bill is gonna do that? Yeah?
I'm gonna turn it over, yeah, Bill, if you wanna jump in, go for it.
Sure, I'll just jump in real briefly. Actually, Peter's gonna take this one on, I, I think. We just let council know, you know, we've been in pretty close coordination with, uh, the school districts. As we're, you know, this, this project's gonna be extending into September, which is the beginning of the school year. And, uh, just coordinating the logistics of the detours and getting the word out to, to different folks and different people that, um, serves the community and how they're gonna work around this, so. Give it to Peter.
Members, uh, just a quick update, um, on the progress. We have almost all the stormwater in, except for one pipe across SR nine, which will do during the closure. John Liner and McCarigal are ready for paving and we'll do that when we, after the, uh, SR nine section is done. Utilities, PUD, Astound, Comcast, Zipley and PSC have all been relocated. And, uh, if you go out there now, you'll see sidewalks and us working on curbs and gutters as well. So as Bill mentioned, uh, this is going into school season, so we wanted to work very closely with the school district. Uh, we met with them, adopted with them multiple times, um, just to make sure that we had a good plan. We adjusted it based upon their input. Uh, we provided a couple of easy-to-use graphics from our construction plans that would help the parents of the kids and kids themselves know how to get to school. So for parents, uh, the route is gonna be on Fruitdale and coming from the west along McCarigal. And we've provided a map to show them that. Uh, the kids walking, uh, we've provided a map that shows depending on where they're go- going, um, mostly they're gonna be, if they're heading west... they're going to be, if they're heading west, we're going to take them through Cascade Middle School, and then north or south or west. So we've tried to make that as easy as possible to de-conflict that. So focused on communication, and we'll be out there, especially next week, during the first week, and we'll troubleshoot, and if the school district asks us for anything, we'll make sure that we're being very responsive. So, take any questions now, but also just want to extend the invitation again, if anyone would like to visit that construction site or any of our other projects.
Councilman Cock.
I appreciate the update, and, you know, I am a little disappointed we didn't get it done by the start of school, though. When I took the tour, I understood there were some issues beyond y'all's control that delayed it. My major focus is on making sure the kids get safe. So they have crossing guards, will we have police there, chief? Or how does that work? I'm just kind of wondering with the construction, because isn't the crosswalk across nine just south of the roundabout? So that's where they need to come across, right?
Yes, sir, depending on where they're going. So we have that crosswalk right across from Cascade Middle School, and then if they're going north, we're going to put a temporary crosswalk just north of the construction site. That was a request from the school district that we'll do. And then we're going to have a construction flaggers at each of those main points on the north, east, and south, right at the beginning of the construction. So we'll be able to keep an eye on the kids and making sure they're not entering the construction zone and keeping them safe.
So you think, is there a need, chief, or maybe not?
There's always a plan, but I'm sure we'll be around.
And then, you know, I don't know how this works, but, so the parents are going to be encouraged to go up Fruitdale, down McGargyle, to each of the schools, right? And I hope the encouragement, they include some language not to go down Carter, because I've gotten several complaints about that.
Yes, sir, we have, our official detour route is Fruitdale, and in the school district information that they have sent out, they have explicitly said, "Please use Fruitdale and not Carter."
Good.
So we've tried to get that message out.
Well, good. And, you know, it's the start of school next Tuesday, and, you know, I, everybody needs to be safe, and I hope you guys do everything you can to keep the kids like that, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavaca.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, appreciate that. I, yeah, I understand the roadwork can be difficult. I almost had an anticipation that this was going to happen. I think two meetings ago, I suggested that I was glad that it was on time. So I wish we could have got the news out a bit sooner, that we were running behind, and then really started preparing the community for that. It's a very busy area. I live right on Evans, right by there, and that's during school, it's just really busy for drop-offs and pickups, and there's just no doubt about that. So it'll be very interesting to see how that works out, especially with increased traffic around. And I was going to ask, I sent an email to Bill on any cost increases that we haven't seen included in this, with a month delay on opening, I'm sure there's going to be some cost increases, plus, you know, planning. The other thing that I wanted to really touch on, that I touched in that email, was safety, just as Councilman Cock had mentioned. So really making sure that these kids, when they're crossing the roads outside of these normal areas, the cars that are now bypassing and driving around that are late, that are going faster, are we able to ensure that those kids do have a safe path to and from if they are walking?
Yeah, I believe so. And as far as cars going through the construction site, this is going to be a closed road. So, but we do have accommodation for, with building some of the new sidewalks of the site, that's why we're getting the sidewalks done sooner than later, so that way, those students that are being directed through, I'll say, the outside extremes of the construction site. So if you're coming from the north, coming south on Highway 9, Dana Drive is where there's two ADA ramps, but there's no crosswalk. That's where we're going to put the temporary crosswalk. So kids coming from there are going to get directed to the east side of Highway 9, and then they have hard sidewalk, I think, the entire way right now. No, not quite.
They will, so next Wednesday and Thursday, they're pouring that last section of sidewalk. Unfortunately, couldn't get that done before school, but we'll have that.
And so they'll have a hard sidewalk on that far extreme of the construction zone, the end of the edge of the construction zone. Also, the traffic control flaggers will be there, too, in case somebody gets adventurous, how's that?
But also, you have, we all do, actually, but I'm sure you've been in touch with them, as you said, with the school. And I'm sure that Ruth Richardson, the Communication Director, has been putting that information out as she relay it. She's been putting it out to the parents, so that's, going back to your concern, Mr. Lavaca, that is one means, and it's actually a very powerful means, of getting that information out to all the teachers, students, parents, neighborhood.
And I provided that link with the last weekly update, too, so everybody can click on that link and see part of how we're coordinating with that school, so everybody understands what the plan is, and then it will be a matter of tweaking and adjusting to it, depending on what conditions are.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll be really good after it's all said and done, but I know that there was already issues with congestion before, and then they changed the way the parking lot was configured, which did help, and then they also, this will definitely be something that we hear about, I'll probably hear about it from a number of people, for sure. But what about cost increase?
So, understand that most, so we are going to have some cost increase on the project, but we don't know how that's, every project always has increases and underruns throughout the whole project. One of the biggest challenges right now is we discovered the old concrete road under Highway 9. So one of those pieces is going, we have to remove that concrete road to properly regrade the subgrade for the final design of the thing. But none of those cost increases are major cost changes, so to speak. And so, you know, at this point, we're getting ready to do what we call a cost-to-complete estimate. So when you get to, start approaching 80% of the design, it's not uncommon to do a cost-to-complete, so you know what costs have been expended so far, and then you have a pretty good idea of what is left to be done. And that kind of gives you a good double check, so you know if there's something you need to adjust or reduce in order to keep costs within the original expenditure budget you can, or you know what to anticipate, so you can figure out how you're going to pay for that extra unknown. So we've had some unknowns on this project, much of them are associated with utilities as well, which is kind of a common things on projects when you're digging in the ground. It's just like planting the four fuel tanks under the library in Mount Vernon, you know, you have ways of dealing with it, and it's just a matter of careful construction management so that we can make the best use of those dollars.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks for taking extra precaution with the safety, and you guys had already touched on blasting it on social media, and then possibly ours as well, you know, sharing the two between the school. Could you remind me again when the light, the temporary light at the end of North Reed will be going up? Because people are already starting to pile up, and then they're trying to take a left, and you'll sit there for a very long time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, I forgot to mention that. So that will happen Tuesday, so we can, yes.
Oh, yay, thank you.
We wanted to make sure that we're not doing the detour and the light at the same day, to de-conflict that a little bit. So Tuesday afternoon, we'll get that light up, and then on that morning, you'll see us striping Reed Street to let two lanes, one left, one right.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. I appreciate your guys' hard work on this, on a lot of these bigger projects, sometimes they just take as long as they take. And so, the community seems to be pretty understanding about this. The question that I had was for the connectivity between us and Station 2, that we had a decent plan in place for our, so we wouldn't have any interruptions with our fire and EMS services, as well as, as well as our police department being able to get to some of those areas on the north end of town where a detour all the way up to Fruitdale, or coming all the way up Sap Road might be a little bit, a little bit lengthy.
Yes, sir, I don't want to speak for the fire or police departments, but yes, as you mentioned, there is Reed Street, they can also use Central to get at least onto, further up on Reed, and then there's Fruitdale as well.
Okay.
The other thing, just to add to that, too, is that there is going to be a point in the reconstruction of the subgrade where we won't be able to safely allow, say, a fire truck through or something like that. But as we start to shape that subgrade, get rid of the obstacles, if you want to think of it that way, we will, you know, have close coordination. I've, first set of summer projects I've done in the city with, but in other cities, and how I've always worked with the police and fire departments, is we do have the capability to flag them through, stop operations for construction if there's a fire somewhere or a fire life safety issue. If we have the subgrade toned up to where vehicles can travel through it, and a lot of that you do, and we're building subgrade up two, three feet in some places, right? But as long as there's, it's passable for those vehicles and it's appropriate, we will be coordinating that status with the police and fire departments, and then if we need to, we can flag them through the site, even though it's closed to all general traffic.
Thank you.
Councilman Cock.
Yes, this, a question occurred to me after I took the tour, and thank you all for doing that, it was very helpful to me. Once the roundabout is finished, I had some worries that, you know, people often aren't very good at roundabouts, and directly south of it, you have the crosswalk for the children. I worry a little bit about them coming off the roundabout into a crosswalk. Will that be a signalized crosswalk?
It does have the flashing beacon, so there is that option to push that button, to have a little more notification, but yes, I acknowledge your, the safety issues that we'll need to make sure that we're watching and.
Because they'll have crossing guards during, right before school and right after school, but not the other times. So I just have some concerns, is all.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Burns.
On that note, weren't we doing a lighted crosswalk through the roundabout, like in the road lighting?
Not in road lighting, but we basically have two RRFBs, the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacons, that are push-button actuated on the north and south of the roundabout on Highway 9. We don't necessarily, do we have those on the, on all four legs or just two legs? All four legs, okay, thank you. So all four legs of that roundabout intersection will have a push-button RFB in order to make it visible that somebody is crossing at that time.
And we'll also have more street light, more illumination on the sites, that will also help a little bit.
I got you, okay. I knew that when we were in design, we were talking about a lot, and I was asking about doing the in-road, so disappointed there, but I'm glad that all four sides will at least have a crosswalk.
Councilman Loy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot the answer to the question, but when it's all done, is that leg going to be concrete or blacktop?
The road surface, that'll be asked.
The top.
Oh, the middle island, that will be concrete.
Okay, and the road, the road itself?
That will be asphalt.
Okay, concrete lasts longer, correct?
Yes, sir, it is a, for the asphalt, it is rated for, you know, the full huge WD, WB 67 truck, it's nine inches of asphalt, so it's a pretty hefty section.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to extend my thanks to Bill Bullock and his team, to Peter, and also to Kyle, and I know that you all stepped into this project, it started before you, so you, you know, didn't have a say-so on how you wanted to see it go, but you picked up the ball and you ran with it, you know, given the delays that happened. But I think you've done an amazing job, and I appreciate the questions that the council is asking regarding safety, because you've heard it from me over and over again, but I know that you've done a great job of doing the very best that you can to provide that safety. So, thank you so much to you, Director, and to your team, Peter and Kyle, you're doing a great job, we appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then to Councilman's report, so Councilman Loy.
I just got a couple of short things, and I don't really even know where to bring this, but I've always, since Hammer Heritage Square's been built, I've been talking to people about, we need a flag pole there, or flags around the top of the gazebo or something. So I don't know who to talk to to get it put on some schedule, to get somebody to talk about it. So who the hell do I talk to?
Well, you have Mr. Bullock here, who's taking notes right now, and I'm willing to bet that he's going to make that happen.
My name's Kevin. And the other, the other thing I'd like to say, I'd like to congratulate Joe on his new job, and I hope he doesn't have a job for the kids over there at the high school. I was talking to Joe, and back in my day, he drove his '57 Chevy into the shop and opened the hood and sat down, had a beard, and worked on it. Nowadays, you can't even get the lid open, so congratulations and make us proud.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few things tonight, and last week, we had our joint Planning Council meeting and talked about the comp plan. And one thing I wanted to bring up before it gets brought to us to vote on was what is required to be in it and what is elective, one of that being the land acknowledgement. I personally would rather see a working relationship and partnership where our comp plan is emphasizing building meaningful relationships and actions in support of the Upper Skagit tribal community where appropriate, instead of the empty words from a land acknowledgement. To me, that would show more respect and intention from the city. So I just wanted to pass that on. And then the second item was, with these light agendas, I know that we are going to be able to talk about in the next month about the closure of the community center and the parades, and I'm just very much looking forward to taking the time to do that, because I know that with it being closed, it means that we're losing revenue, and so I'm excited to be able to discuss that.
Yeah, we still have events that are happening in there, we just aren't taking them from '26 forward until the council decides what to do.
Right. It was a closure that was based by the administration to close, and we're losing revenue on not being able to take in people to utilize the community center as of right now, and I think that that's a knee-jerk reaction to something, and we should have kept it open.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Good evening. I attended the Planning and Business Development Committee meeting, I'm sure the Chair, Councilmember Cock will touch on that a little bit, but we did discuss the mobile food vendors, no decisions or action was taken at all, but it was a good discussion, so if you have any questions, feel free to talk to one of us on the committee. Thank you for the update on Highway 9 and the construction project. I actually, after the school district sent out a social media notice about the first day of school, I received several phone calls and messages from some pretty upset moms about them requesting that they not take their kid to school on the first day of school. That's really hard for parents to do, especially when they're young elementary school children. So I got some kickback from that, but they also do appreciate the long-term goal in alleviating the traffic. So they understand the process, but also was frustrated on the situation, because the first day of school is very important to a lot of families and a lot of children, and moms and dads. So just passing that along, and also thank you for providing the update on the Reed Street traffic control. I received lots of complaints, and I personally did a couple of my own timed studies trying to cross the street, and it, on average, was anywhere from five to seven minutes to be able to get across from Reed to North Reed during just regular business hours after three o'clock. So that's a little rough when you're just trying to cross the street. So thank you for making something happen there. And then lastly, I just wanted to pass along and let people know on a public level that I was approached by a few people that have been actively involved in this best project and following it. And because it was brought up at a school board meeting this week, I was asked if I specifically have been approached by PSC to have private meetings, or if I have been approached by anybody for reconsideration, and I want to just say publicly that I have not. I have not had any private meetings with anybody from Puget Sound Energy, or anybody in regards to this project. I also want to confirm the fact that I have seen zero information that would change my view in how this was, how my position here would change the support or lack thereof. I still am firm in that I do not support it, and have not seen any. I still am firm in that I do not support it and have not seen any further information. And I do believe that as a council, we unanimously opposed the project just outside of Seidrow Lee. And we signed that letter, and I reminded them that that letter can be found on our website, and additional information in regards to all of that is on our website, and any current action or information would be there. So I just wanted to make note that that is in fact the case, and it's my understanding that there has been no additional information passed on that would change the viewpoint of myself or the council that I'm aware of. So, thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So going through the comp plan in a lot greater detail after last week, one of the suggestions that I like to bring up is that anything's not, that isn't a requirement from the state while we're planning under the GMA, we remove from the comp plan. And if we could perhaps have the consultants from Fausset or Planning let us know what's absolutely not required, and we can focus more in detail on the things that aren't required rather than the things that just absolutely have to be in there for us planning under the GMA. The second thing is, I've been seeing a lot of young kids and high school age kids on the electric bikes and scooters, and they're the fast ones, like that go traffic speed. A lot of heavy road usage from these individuals, and so I wanted to ask if we had a policy on policing these. Are helmets, registration, insurance, and driver's licenses required for road usage? Are they subject to traffic laws? I reached out to some other law enforcement people that I know, and they said that it's a complete nightmare for them, that it's all so new that it's hard to regulate.
All right, we used to have one for just kind of foot scooters way back when. I don't believe we have anything for electric bikes or scooters.
Can I weigh in? Yes, go ahead, Nikki.
Actually, electric bikes are incorporated by reference in the Model Traffic Ordinance. I believe your Model Traffic Ordinance incorporation is up to date, so the e-bikes should be in there, but I can go in and check real quick and send an email around.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, and then definitely please see the progress on Township Street. The paving is immaculate, everything's perfect going down. There's a few finishing touches around some of the ramps and stuff like that, but that's all landscaping finished stuff. Everybody in the neighborhood and the surrounding community absolutely love it, so we're pretty happy with that. So thank you for your efforts.
Good note to end on. Councilman Koch?
Yes, before I started on the committee, I want to follow up on what Councilman Henderson said. I saw a fellow on, it wasn't an e-bike, but he looked like he was going thirty, forty miles an hour on some sort of device, so maybe our code needs to be broadened to include some of these new, and on my street, I have little tiny kids, they're like four years old, zipping up and down twenty miles an hour. So it's something that we should probably look at. I chaired the Planning and Business Development Committee, and thank you. We did discuss the mobile food vendors. We had a really good discussion. I know that there's, it's a complicated issue, and we're going to be continuing to look at how to improve the code so to protect our existing businesses and also to encourage business. And then we also continued, discussed a little bit on the murals, and there's going to be some more research done on that. I also, you know, it's the Planning and Business Development Committee, I also passed around a press release from Janicki, which I thought was fantastic news, that they're going to be opening a new plant up near Hamilton and hiring three hundred and fifty new people. When I moved here thirty years ago, I think both of the mills had closed, at least one of them. Seidrow Willie was destitute economically, and Janicki's turned that page. I know there's complaints about the traffic, but you know, it's one of the, I prefer well-paying, stable jobs, and we're working on the traffic. So I just wanted to say that. Anything else my fellow council members want to add? Oh, I had one other thing. The, also, I wanted to give kudos to the positive stories in the Skagit Valley Herald on the Public Works Building nearing completion, that's good, and the arrival of the Fire Department Command Car, good work, and I'd love to tour the building when it's done. That'd be fun. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Kevin, I wanted to thank you for the congratulations and the call. As I start the job as the new high school auto shop teacher, I'm scrambling to get everything together so I can do a good job from the beginning. Also wanted to share something. I got a positive call from a constituent that wanted to thank us for the crosswalks on Township Street near Ferry and up at the pedestrian trail, and they really liked the pave job that we had done on Township. So, you know, we always hear concerns, sometimes it's nice to hear the thanks. So, thank you to the staff and make it work.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've heard some really good things about that road improvement along Township up and down, so just to mirror what Councilman Henderson was talking about, it's turned out really well. And so it's very smooth, and there was a dip for a long time, so I kept hearing about, like, do you know what's going on when that'll be fixed? I said, well, they're working their resources strategically, so very nice to see that done. So yeah, the, it was nice to see that news article myself. I know that I work up at the Hamilton site, so I'm watching this building come together, but that's definitely a lot of people, and to think, just on what you were just saying, Councilman Koch, about a decimated community with the mill closure. And I come from Plublo, which got decimated when Plublo still got closed, and they've never recovered because no business has started up there. So I always love seeing startup businesses that just totally mature and grow and bless the community, so that's really great to see. We, I've been hearing a lot of great things about the parks that are coming together, and especially with Olmsted. You know, I've heard some things about the cost of that and the, how, you know, there's other projects that we should be doing in the city, and even today, somebody came to me and was talking about, maybe they just don't understand, maybe the money's already allocated. And I did talk to him about the grant specifically for things like that, that you can't just take in and apply it to a waste treatment facility or a road project and that kind of stuff. So it was a good educational process there and an opportunity to direct him to the website. I have heard a couple of things, not as many as I've had in the past, but with the police shooting that, or not police shooting, but the community center shooting that took place, and still looking forward to hearing about that. For right now, what they're asking is, are we going to be able to get that SRO officer in there? And I know that's a hot topic and a discussion here, and it's really great to see our police force actually fill out. It's sad that Washington is the least policed in the entire union, and they receive the least support, so I am very thankful that our community fully embraces our police force, and you guys do a great job, so that's really great. We'll talk about it at our Safety Committee meeting coming up here in about two weeks, and so it'll be a great chance to talk about both of those things and see what we can do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just one comment, Councilman Koch, on the AWC legislative priorities, there are a lot of other cities that are greatly concerned about the e-bikes. And Councilman Henderson, you brought it up as well, that the speed that they go, and there doesn't seem to be anything that really controls them. There's nothing, there's no oversight, I guess is the word I'm looking for. So it is getting to be an issue, and I was sharing tonight at the meeting that actually there are now e-motocycles, which, you know, may sound great, except that they're really quiet. So, and you know, the advantage of those loud pipes on motorcycles is so that they can be seen and heard. So, yeah, it's a new era, but we will learn as we go. We will learn as we go. So I have a couple of things. First off, we had a audit, and the audit results came in really, really well. Director Kelly Conken was complimented for her timely response to the auditors and any requests that they had. There were no deficiencies in the design or operation of internal control or financial reporting. It was all very, very positive. They said that there were no deficiencies in the consideration of the material and any kind of weakness, and she's complying with, and in accordance with the two CFR two hundred point five one six A. So, doing really well. And they even sent a letter talking about how well the, how well a report it was. An update on the comp plan, be looking for an update on our September twenty-fourth, the last meeting of September. We are looking to do another joint council planning meeting. This, of course, like I said, is not during our regular time, and next steps for the council or for the comp plan is going to be setting up a daytime and location for a public open house to present the draft to the residents, and also working with the Planning Commission to set a date and time to conduct a formal, a formal public hearing. Couple other things I wanted to make you aware of. We are moving towards the completion, which is very exciting, of Olmsted Park. We're looking to do a ribbon cutting. It'll probably be in either October, November, so be sure to wear your wellies and a warm coat, because we plan to do a ribbon cutting with Representative Larson. And the other thing is that the Jonesdon Line or BNSF undercrossing, the construction, which actually has come in at two million one hundred thousand, the design completion is set for February of 2026, so we're looking at getting movement on that as well. So I think that is all that I had from there. And then I wanted to remind everybody of the Building and Future Housing Crisis Thriving Community Forum that's happening September ninth from six to eight. It's at the Mount Vernon Library Commons. The speaker that who is going to be there is the same speaker who spoke about housing at the summit that we did in June, and I know Alan and Sarah and Kevin, I believe you were there. So three, yes, and that's right. So he's going to be speaking again, talking about that, so thank you, Paul. So hoping that you can make that. It's actually going to be a chance to really discover how we can do changing zoning, how we can shift towards housing-friendly options. It's something that we all have to do. It's kind of nice to hear other communities doing it, you know. Multiple ideas is better than just kind of mixing the same thing around. So the other thing that I want to put on your radar is the Tuesday, September thirtieth, from six to eight p.m., it's the next joint meeting with the other cities and with the commissioners. And Thursday, November sixth, from six to eight, again, the joint meeting with the council members and the commissioners. And I really appreciated all of you who came. I really did, because it was, I received good feedback from it, and you got to hear what the other cities are doing, and, you know, I think you're seeing that you're actually spot on with a lot of things, so thank you for being there. And that is all I have right now, which was a lot. So from that, we're going to move into public comment. It is seven twenty-two. I'll open it up for public comment. I don't know if anybody signed up. Is there a sheet back there that, if somebody can just check real quick, like, and let me know? Okay, good. All right, so given that, I'll open it up for public comment, seven twenty-two. Is there anybody within the chamber who would like to give comment? If so, name and how you're affiliated with the community, and try to keep it within three minutes. Anyone? All right. Seeing no one, I will close, public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business, the stormwater management plan, so. Thank you, Kyle. You're going to do the introduction here and lead us forth?
Yes, I'm Kyle Anderson. I'm the Assistant City Engineer. I've had the pleasure of working with Stacy Clear, Kurt Ifrig from Gray &amp; Osborne, as well as Karen Johnson from Kale J Financial Consulting. As part of our update that hasn't occurred since nineteen ninety-seven here, Stacy and the team have put together a really great job. We're going to let her talk with us a little bit, and she's, our team's available if you have any questions.
Great, thank you, Kyle. Welcome, Stacy.
Hello, thank you. So first of all, thanks for allowing us to do the presentation tonight. It's great to accommodate. I also know that it's going to be really challenging to talk stormwater amongst all this heat that we've been having, so if you can just, rain's coming, if you can channel that vision of rain, that'll be great. As Kyle mentioned, I'm Stacy Clear, I'm a principal at Gray &amp; Osborne. I have my coworker Kurt online to help answer questions. He's one of the main authors of the plan. And then Karen Johnson is the financial consultant. She came here a few meetings ago and talked about stormwater finances, so she'll give you a few updates as well. So, let's see, is the presentation coming?
Woody, if you could pull up the attachment that I put with the council agenda, we can go through the PowerPoint slide.
While he's doing that. So I just want to, tonight, give you an overview of the stormwater management plan update. The first slide is really just a list of all the chapters, and we'll go through that in detail. But basically, this plan is about telling you about your stormwater system, what are the problems today, what are the problems tomorrow, what are some solutions, and how are we going to pay for it? So the first chapter is the introduction. So basically, it describes what is the purpose of the plan. So the city wants to help protect the environment, wants to help reduce flooding, do maintenance, and then also provide for the cost of this utility. So you're probably wondering, what is your stormwater utility? What is this system? What does it look like? What does the utility do? Well, it consists of four major drainage basins, which if you have the, a copy of it, there's a picture, there's a map of those basins, but basically, the city is encompassed by four major drainage basins. Miles upon miles of stormwater pipes, ditches, catch basins. I did a fun little activity where if you imagine taking every stormwater pipe in the city, every ditch, putting it end to end to end, it stretches from here to just three miles shy of Canada. So imagine that long stretch of infrastructure that your staff has to maintain. So it's a lot of maintenance, but not only do you have to deal with maintenance, but the utility also has to deal with the regulatory side of it. There's a permit that you have to be upheld to, so it's called the MPDS Phase Two Permit. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Let's see, I am on about the third slide, Woody? Third or fourth? Says introduction, chapter one. Yeah, that's a good one? Okay. So, yeah, there says permit that you have to be upheld to, and it deals with not only just maintenance, but education and planning, and we'll go into that in more detail, but also just generally, your utility is there to help prevent flooding and to provide water quality. Next slide, please. So also, our chapter one introduction is really, talks about what are the main issues that we see within the city. We talked with operations staff, the engineers, public works people, and really, one of the biggest problems is just aged infrastructure. You've got a lot of pipes that are corroding and need to be replaced. There's also, kind of a little more recently, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife has determined that a lot of culverts just aren't big enough to pass fish. They have to be way larger than the small size that they are today, so that's another concern. And then additionally, there's a lot of older parts of town, probably the south, and they just don't have any sort of water quality treatment right now, so there's a lot of opportunities to retrofit those areas. Next slide. So chapter two is really just the basics, the kind of lay of the land of your system. It's just, we talk about the climate, how much rain there is in this area. We talk about the soils, topography, wetlands and so forth, so it's really just background information. Next slide. I'm going to skip chapter three, we'll come back to that, but chapter four is all about water quality. So around this area, the state has declared a number of water bodies are impaired. So we've got the Skagit River, Hart Slough, we have Brickyard, Hanson and Thompson Creeks. All of them have various different constituents that make them impaired, so maybe temperature may be high in some. The dissolved oxygen may be low, so these aren't great conditions for fish or the habitat that are living within these streams. Our chapter four also talks about what sort of potential pollutants are out there. So fertilizers, you go to fertilize your yard, or maybe nitrogen, phosphorus. This may be washed down and put into your streams and rivers. We also list what the state considers is the criteria to have good stormwater, good streams. And then finally, we list what sort of solutions we can do to try to combat these pollutants. So one of those things you can do is to do riparian restoration, so you can plant trees and vegetation so that we're lowering that temperature, we're increasing the dissolved oxygen. We can also do structural measures. There's things such as vaults that have filters in them, so the stormwater will filter through that and then come out cleaner on the other side and discharge into the river. We have, just as you're driving down the road, you'll see a grass ditch along the side. That's actually doing water quality treatment along the way. That's actually doing water quality treatment along the way. Education is another way to combat pollutants. I have worked with jurisdictions who honestly admitted that they have in the past just poured paint right down a catch basin. So, education can go a long way, just making sure some constituents and everybody knows it's not the smartest thing to do. And then lastly, street sweeping has been found recently to just really kind of help reduce those pollutants. If you get it off the streets before it has a chance to move on downstream, that's a great way to prevent pollution. Okay, so, chapters five and six, these deal with the regulatory side of it, the maintenance side of things. I talked about that MPDS Phase 2 permit. There are so many things that staff has to deal with, with this permit. Have to deal with planning, have to deal with having a really good map. We talked about education as a requirement. Have to know what to do with spills. You have to know when a new development comes in, are they designing their new infrastructure appropriately? Not only designing it, are they installing it appropriately and making sure all of that is done well? And then on top of that, something a little newer with this permit cycle, is that the city has to do retrofits. You have to actually build something to put in the ground, or say, doing those grass bile swells that help increase doing water quality treatment. And lastly, maintenance. Maintenance is definitely a key thing, as we've touched upon. So, amongst these chapters five and six, we've come up with kind of the ideal maintenance plan to hit the best maintenance level for all of those pipes, all the, think that long stretch line to Canada, all that infrastructure that you have to maintain. So, we've come up with how many hours and how much staff it would take to deal with that. And we have come up with about five FTEs, so equivalent about five full-time staff. Currently, the city has three people to, you know, equivalent, equivalent full-time. So, as part of this plan, we're going to recommend two more full staff, or full-time staff. In addition to maintenance, about one and a half FTEs needed just for all the other stuff, all the non-maintenance, all that education, all that, just keeping track of everything. Collier loves documentation. So, it's a big, it's a really big chore and takes a lot of people to deal with the stormwater utility. Next slide, please. So, chapters three and seven, coming back to chapter three. So, this is where we talk about what issues you have and then come up with solutions or capital improvement projects. So, for the ease of slides, I just kind of divide the city to north and south. So, this is just a quick recap. Then, in the north end, we're showing 11 projects. 10 of them are pipe-related or ditch-related, and then we have one water quality facility. Next slide, please. And then on the south side, we have eight projects. Five of these are pipe or ditch enhancements, and three are water quality facilities. So, next slide. So, from these recommended 19 projects, we are going to propose eight of these projects happen within the next 10 years. So, I'll dive into a little bit more detail on each of these. So, F and S Grade Road, there's some really corroded pipes along there. So, that's one project, is just to replace those pipes. The second one listed there is Cambridge Commons, also kind of in the north end of town. This area historically has had a little bit of flooding, so therefore, we're recommending having this overflow pipe to just move that water on downstream. Next slide. Next project, we talked about fish culverts. So, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife has determined there's at least four culverts within, along Brickyard Creek that are considered impassable. So, this is a project of dealing with those four areas and replacing them with much larger culverts. Next slide. Couple more to go, Murdoch Street and Reed Street. This is a condition where public stormwater is actually flowing into private facilities. So, to lessen the burden on those private facilities, we're trying to take the water, direct it back into a public system. That last bullet there is to replace a few corroding culverts down at the Riverfront Park. Next slide. And finally, the last two of our 10-year projects are water quality related. One idea is to just put a large water quality pond down towards the river. This really helps with the whole southern end of town in capturing those pollutants before they get sent off, before the water gets sent off to the river. And then Jones Road, this is where there's a ditch essentially already, but then there would be some enhancements to bring it up to today's standards, to make sure that pollutants are being captured. Next slide. Okay, so, the cost to do all of these projects over the next 10 years is just a little under $8 million. So, to determine how to pay for these projects and the baseline expenditures, so those things like maintenance, is something that Karen has provided three scenarios for. So, I'm going to turn it over to her, and she'll talk a little bit more about this approach. Next slide.
Thanks, Stacy. Good evening, everyone. This first slide here we're looking at was a request from our presentation on July 23rd, where council members requested that we provided a little bit of information on historical expenditures for stormwater capital expenditures and operating expenditures. We just added this slide, basically showing the, kind of the blue color bar is the operating expenditures, which have ranged, you know, starting in 2015 around $500,000, you know, up towards, you know, the million-dollar market this point. And then the capital expenditures for stormwater have been relatively low in some of the early years, up to kind of an average spending of maybe about $30,000 per year. So, overall, combining the operating and capital expenditures, you know, it's been a range over the last 10 years of, you know, going from about, you know, $500,000, $600,000 to upwards of over a million. And that's about right where we're starting at for looking at the financial projections for going forward. So, next slide. The first thing I wanted to do is an update. We had an update on the baseline operations from our prior presentation in July, where we have added the two new FTEs that Stacy mentioned for permit compliance. We've got one FTE starting in 2027, and then another FTE starting in 2029. So, the buildup of this, this chart here shows all of the operations expenditures compared to your existing rates, and then identifies what type of rate increases needed each year in order to fund these baseline capital projects. And this is prior to us looking at what the additional impacts are of funding the capital improvement program that Stacy just walked us all through. So, the bottom of this chart is dark purple, I'm sorry, the dark blue. That is kind of your annual operating expenditures under your existing staff levels. And the gold bar adds in what the impact is of adding these two additional FTEs. So, you can see, you know, starting in 2027 up through 2034, there's an additional impact from what we presented in our prior study, presentation, on what the rate increases would be. So, what we're looking at here for the first four years of the study period, 2026 through 2030, it would be about a 6.5% increase per year in order to cover the inflationary impacts of your existing level of service for operations, plus the additional FTEs. And then it provides a little bit of contributions to the operating reserve, that's to maintain your 30-day target for making sure you have enough reserves to handle, you know, unexpected expenditures or shortfalls in revenues. And it also, just because of the smoothing effect of just having it be at 6.5% per year, it provides the capacity to contribute about $30,000, $30,000 per year for capital expenditures. So, this is just a quick look at, just giving you sort of the baseline of, you know, kind of the minimum level of spending that would be required for operations, including the MLEF TEs prior to incorporating the capital. Next slide, please. The next slide, we prepared three scenarios. So, these are similar scenarios to what we presented in July. We did add in the two FTEs. We also had an update to the cash balances, which provided some additional funding for capital. So, overall, these scenarios are pretty similar to order of magnitude of what we presented in July. We have three scenarios. Scenario one assumes getting some grant funding for four of the projects, doing some debt financing for remaining projects, and then using cash reserves. Scenario two is grants and loans as well, same as scenario one, but giving an option for maybe having a lower first-year rate increase and then higher future-year rate increases. And then scenario three, being the most conservative scenario, assumes that you don't receive any of the grants, and so all of the capital projects would need to be funded either through debt or through your cash reserves and rates. And so, just to kind of summarize up at the top section, that first section for scenario one, the annual rate increases would be 8% per year, 2026 through 2030. And these incorporate the baseline operations. This is not in addition to, this would be the total package, including the baseline plus each scenario. So, 8% 2026 through 2030, followed by about 4% increases for the remainder of the 10-year period. So, the, your total bill, including the utility tax, would increase from its current rate of $1491 up to $2562 by the end of the 10-year study period. When you're looking at kind of that purple line there, which shows the monthly difference in the rate for each of those years, in total, over the 10-year period, it's about an average annual increase to the total stormwater bill of about $1.19 per month, per year. So, that is scenario one. Scenario two, again, which has all the same parameters as scenario one, but lowering that first-year rate increase from 8% to 6.5%, and then increasing the future years slightly to kind of make up the difference. This is just, you know, an option for if you wanted to have a little bit of a lower increase in the first year as you're evaluating the potential to get grants and so forth, just a very similar scenario with the end results being very close. So, as you can see, scenario two is 6.5%, and then 8.5% increases, and then 4%. Really, it's just a penny difference per month in total from scenario one by having that lower first-year rate increase. Scenario three is the most conservative scenario, assuming no grants. We've got debt issuance there. That brings the increases to 9.75% through 2030, and then 4%. So, that increases the average annual monthly bill, which is those circled numbers there, there, to $1.43. So, just in looking at the impact on the customer bill, the difference between scenario one and two is pretty normal, you know, a penny or so per month. And then the difference between scenario one and three is about 23 cents per month, going from $1.19 per month on average to $1.43 per month on average. So, this comparison is looking at each of the scenarios, including the baseline of what the rate would be and what the total bill would be. And then taking a look at next slide, please. This slide gives a summary of what each of those scenarios provides for in terms of capital funding strategies. So, just to kind of recap, scenario one is the 8% for the first four years, and then 4%. The monthly rate at year 10, when the capital improvement program is completely finalized, goes from $23.19 to a total bill, including the utility tax of $2562. That kind of presents that $1.19 increase that we showed on the second page. And then scenario two, right next to that in that top section, is very close, just a penny years, you know, so difference each year. So, bringing that to, you know, a total bill increase of $10.23. And then scenario three, a total utility bill of $12.86. The second middle section in here is looking at what that means in terms of the requirements for funding and what kind of type of debt service we're looking at. So, for both scenarios one and two, the grant funding would be about 57% of the total funding for that $7.8 million capital project, about $4.4 million assumed in these two scenarios for grants. Debt issuance of about $1.5 million, and then the remaining $1.9 million from cash. With this $1.5 million debt issuance, in total, you would get total annual debt service for the stormwater utility of $90,000 per year, $90,000 per year. Currently, there is no debt service in the stormwater utility, so this would be, you know, new for the utilities to incur some debt at 90k. And then if you look at scenario three, you consider quite a bit of a, an increase in the amount of debt required when you assume that you don't get any grants. So, $5.7 million in debt required there, $2.1 million would be the remainder for funding the $7.8 million project. So, you know, the key differences between scenarios one and two, and then scenario three, is this, you know, this issuance of debt, either $1.5 million or $5.7 million. And the difference between $90,000 a year in new debt compared to scenario three being $347,000. So, ideally, getting grants would be great. That makes it be the lowest-cost scenario, but they're not always, you know, for sure that you can get those. So, it's kind of, just kind of looking at, you know, where we feel comfort-wise on the feasibility of giving those grants. The bottom section of this table just shows that all of the scenarios have been set to meet the recommendation we've had for keeping a capital reserve of about $442,000, and then phasing into having a $200,000 per year target, where you're directly funding your replacement-type projects from rates. And here, we're showing that, and we're around 40, 40 to 50% of that target on these scenarios, with the assumption that you would, you know, then move towards that, you know, over the next five to 10 years after this policy. So, over to the right, just kind of a snapshot of how to just, you know, highlight what the key differences are for decision-making purposes. Then scenario one is grants and loans, and smoothing that first four years of rate increases at 8%. The advantages of this scenario is it has relatively low debt, $1.5 million, and it has the lowest overall bill impact over the total study period. I also ran, you know, several different kind of sensitivity analysis just to see, you know, what else you could do in combinations with this type of rate increase. And this scenario provides the most flexibility without being overly conservative. Scenario three, I'm going to jump back to scenario three with no grants. It's a conservative scenario, possibly a little bit more conservative than necessary. We have four projects identified as giving grants, potential for giving grants. And while, you know, it may not be possible to get grant funding for all of them, it's fairly likely that you would get some grant funding. So, this one is probably the most conservative with a no grant. It also has the disadvantage of it has higher debt and the highest rate increases between scenarios one, two, and three. So, that's kind of the overview of what everything looks like. We're looking at between 8% per year, 8.5% per year, high side, 9.75% per year. So, kind of what we're looking for is, you know, just inputs and thoughts on, you know, the feasibility of the grant funding and, you know, where the decision-making would be for how we would align and choose a scenario for finalizing the master planning, financial section of the chapters. Next slide. This is again a request from council from the last meetings to show a little bit of history of what the rates have been over the last few years. So, you know, going back to 2021, the rates have increased from $1193 up to your current rate of $1349. So, over these past five years, the percentage increase has been somewhere between 2.3% and 4.1% per year. With the scenarios we've just presented, your current rates would be in 2026, we have proposed between $1437 for the lowest-cost scenario and $1481 for the highest-cost scenario. And then on the right, we've just showed a little sample of comparison of, you know, what the current bills are in a couple of the neighboring jurisdictions and other utility surveys. So, Burlington's at $1644, Burndale $2491, Cordena's was $1687, Arlington $798. So Burlington's at sixteen forty four, Burndale twenty four ninety one, Cordeant was sixteen eighty seven, Arlington seven ninety eight, and the Fife twenty four eighty seven. So that's just information requested. So I think Stace is going to kind of wrap up with what our, what our next steps are, but essentially looking for some comments, inputs on where you may be leaning towards on preference of the scenarios.
Thanks, Karen. Next slide, please. Okay, so yes, what are those next steps? As Karen alluded to, we're looking for a direction from you, which of these scenarios is your preference. Karen also is going to be working on the general facility charge, that's when someone connects to your stormwater system, with that chunk of money they pay to do that. The last chapter to be done is the financial chapter. We're hoping it's done at end of September. And then we want to come to you with a draft plan by October and hopefully adopt it in November. So that's our, our big goal. So at this time, I think we'll entertain any questions?
Go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. Several months ago, it probably was a little over a year ago, we were discussing our, another utility rate, which was our garbage. We had a gentleman working for us at the time. He came down from Bellingham for a short amount of time to work here, and he came up with this plan of offsetting our reserve fund in the solid waste to help mitigate. So each year's incremental increase wasn't, you know, we weren't just spiking, right? Do we have a reserve fund for our stormwater? And if so, how much do we have? And could we use that to mitigate some of the higher impact to the, to the ratepayers?
So the reserve fund is incorporated into this, into this analysis. And we've kind of used that, that's where we were able to be able to smooth the rate increases instead of spiking, you know, like an eight, and then a twelve, and then a fifteen. So we've used that reserve to help smooth that rate increase, meet these needs, and then end with your targeted balance of thirty days of O and M. So that's all kind of pictured, integrated into this analysis with, with, with that balances in there. And then you also have cash balances which are shifted over. So any of your cash balances that are above your operating needs are available to capital. And so that piece, which was about a million dollars, is available to fund those capital projects and get the rates as we've presented them in the scenarios with the debt service in there. So it's all, it's all kind of built in there, built in there together.
So Karen, it's about thirty thousand per year that you were estimating? To kind of build up each year? Is that correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, Stace, I'm having trouble hearing you.
So was it about thirty thousand per year to contribute to those capital projects you had mentioned?
That's just, that's just for the, for the rate, rate funding side. What we did is we transferred all of the, all of the money above what the minimum requirement was into capital, so. You're pretty much already at your thirty day reserve, so it's just minimal contributions in the first couple of years, you know, about thirty thousand per year over the first three years to get the baseline analysis, meeting the targets and funding the cost. And then all the rest went to capital to help mitigate the need for debt. Did that answer your question, Councilman?
Councilman Cock?
Yes, I had a question on this project, Brickyard Creek Fish Passage Culverts. I don't know if this will help, but for some time, there've been Brickyard Creek floods along Magargyle, and especially along Independence. And I've received a fair number of complaints about that. I know there was some kind of flood control measure put at Magargyle and Fruitdale. I don't know if that was a vault or what, but I, I just wondered if that would help because it happens every year. The golf course floods every year, but I think a lot of that's, it's a flood zone, for one thing, but it's coming down off the hill. But it, it's a, it's a perpetual issue.
Sure, yeah, and, and know that anytime that you go from a culvert to a fish passable culvert, they're, they're hugely oversized essentially for flooding purposes. So to give you an example, we have one that's a five foot high culvert now, and we're saying it needs to be fifteen foot wide to meet the fish passage criteria. So exponentially larger.
Okay, that's helpful. Hopefully, that'll work. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. So if you're looking for a direction on rate preference, for, for me and the people that I represent, the lowest impact to them is possible out of their pocket every month. So rate number one's attractive to me, obviously. Now, what, what is our likelihood of getting grant funding to match what, match what those rates are in scenario one? And then the likelihood in scenario two? And then scenario three is a nightmare scenario for us, obviously.
It is, yeah, so, yeah, scenario one and two, the likelihood, you know, similar in terms of your anticipating grants. I will say, in terms of utilities, stormwater, water sewer, I feel like stormwater is the hardest one to get money for. Ecology has kind of been the best avenue to go for to obtain water quality. Everything's got to have a water quality nexus if you go through them. So flooding projects tend to be out unless you add some sort of water quality nexus to it. But I, so I, I feel it's challenging, and it's getting, on my personal opinion, even harder to get money through ecology. They're making, it's taken longer, they're a little more particular. So I, I'd say scenario three is very nice and conservative to assume that you're not getting money. Ideally, I mean, obviously, we're going to always want to try to go for grants. That's just the absolute best scenario, but it may be wise to plan for not having it. Because stormwater money, in my personal opinion, I've been doing this twenty eight years, I feel like it's pretty hard to get.
I can answer, I can add to some of that, too. So I, it, it all depends on the mosaic of funding you're getting. DOE right now is really focused on water quality. If you're going after something that's more fish passage related, like the Brickyard Creek box culvert we intend to put in on Jones Road, that's more of a Bryan Abbott Fish Passage Grant process. And I've gotten those grants as well. The other thing that, and, and some of this is, is deciding what level of complexity to add to a plan like this, this is also assuming there's no joint projects, I'm assuming, right? So as an example, the F and S grade road, I call it an interceptor line, but that's, that's a stormwater line that doesn't have any surfaces coming into it or going out of it. Depends on what you're talking about. But that, I think that's a double culvert system that, and some of it's even clay pipe, I think, which is what's so terrible about it. But right now, we also have F and S grade road phase one and two. And the intent is to have, as we build those road projects, to replace those interceptor pipes into something that's far more modern than what's there now. And so some of those costs can actually be tied into the road project as well. So there's some other complexity in consideration. This is a plan, and then it's up to us in Public Works to figure out the best way to integrate that plan. I would assume that most of the things we can do on this are going to have some sort of grant capacity piece into it. And if we have a debt service loan piece to, in something like this, we'd go with Public Works Trust Fund loans that are about a half percent interest as opposed to something at five percent interest. So it, it's going to be a mosaic. And it's also a thing where we might not do everything on this list in ten years. Just like on the six year tip, we're not doing everything on that list in six years, right? So it's, but the part of the point this is that with all the aging infrastructure, especially with what I call CMP corrugated metal pipe culverts that rust out, those things can then have risks of creating sinkholes and so. So we're going to have a strategy that this plan leads. But at the same time, there's some other complexities that don't make it quite as dire as what we've got right here. But we have to consider this as stormwater centric. But there is quite a bit of, of overlap with some of our transportation, stormwater, that type of thing. And so it's something that will evolve as we move forward, but we certainly want to be proactive with it. And just in case people are wondering, because I haven't gotten the question yet, Mount Vernon stormwater rate is about fifteen dollars and forty four cents. So we're still right in that ballpark, not being way high, certainly. But right, kind of that lower third mid-range is what I'd classify it.
That's good to know.
I don't know what Arlington's doing.
Councilman Burns.
I'm sure I can assume that none of us really want to raise the rates any more than we have to. So let's say we go with option one or two. At what point in this ten year plan do we start either saying, okay, we're doing really great with grants, we can scale back? Or we're doing terribly, we might have to actually increase this? Like, how, what kind of timeframe do you look at when you're trying to get grants for these various projects?
That's about, that's evaluated annually, and it's almost a little bit of a living document. Sometimes you're lucky, sometimes, you know, opportunities come up that you might not have even predicted that we're there. And like I said, Bill had said there, what we can pair these in creative ways that get mutual benefit to the transportation as well as our stormwater and water quality.
Okay, for me, just looking at these, I would say scenario two is probably the safer bet. I'd rather go with the lower amount, but that way, as we go, we have a better chance of assessing down instead of up. That would be my preference.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate all the work you guys have put into this. And I wish there was a way for us to really loop all of our rate increases into a few sessions, like one session have the stormwater, the waste, anything that we're dealing with on increases to just be talked about at once. Because right now, e- even the property tax, because it's, it's pretty small amounts, really, and ultimately, what we're talking about, the overall after the ten year, if we go with the full number three, it does raise it a hundred and forty four dollars a year. So that's, that's quite a bit of a sticker shock by twenty thirty four. And that doesn't include the comebacks for inflation. It doesn't include the comebacks for, you know, any kind of tax increases. Right now, it's a ten point five, as pointed out on that slide, that's about what we charge. And of course, not this year, because we'll, we'll have to do this, but next year, we'll be having people come back asking us to raise the taxes on, on what we just raised, because it's a back and forth. So that's the challenge. One and two really don't, you know, like you said, it's a one cent difference. And so that one cents on twelve months is, is twelve cents, right, at the end of that. So one and two are really kind of a moot point, except for how much people are going to see as an increase every month. And when you're looking at the difference from a dollar twenty nine to a dollar thirty five, you're looking at six cents a year, right, that they're going to see that difference from one and two. So to me, I don't even see like a lot of discussion on, on the one and two. You know, we're talking about very, very small amounts onto a bill. Overall, when the garbage comes in, the recycle comes in, the fuel charges, when property tax, now we're looking at what is the taxpayer here actually going to be spending? But if this is something that's, you know, required, I'm not really in favor of leaning into grants myself, right? We, we already are very grant dependent. I happened to look up just online today, for whatever reason, through, through ChatGPT or whatever, is Seadrill Woolly over budget? And it pretty much said Seadrill Woolly is not over budget, but they're on a knife's edge. They're heavily dependent on grants, and they're, you know, very concerned about their budget at this time. And it just goes through kind of only available data. It's not living intelligence, it's just pulling available data, data and predictive modeling. But still, yeah, it's, it's suggesting Seadrill Woolly in itself on its budget is very, very tight and heavily dependent on grants. So we've got to fold into everything Olympia is telling us to do, or we don't have a choice. So i- in this rate, I mean, we're looking at, you know, ultimately, twenty, twenty five seventy four to twenty seven seventy seven, right? So you're looking at basically point twenty four cents of a month difference. And so at the end of the day, even with that third rate increase, we're going to see more upfront. But overall, it's, it's not going to be a huge amount on the taxpayer. We're looking at, you know, overall, the ten years in twenty thirty four, they're going to see a much bigger bill. But it's going to be incrementally growing in, in basically the, the small under ten dollars a year amounts. So on average, so I don't, I don't know. To me, it's all, whatever the council decides, but I think it's a moot point.
Okay, well, if there are no more questions, what is the council's preference? Option one, two, sounds like three may be out. I don't know.
I, I agree, though, not much of a discernible difference between one and two. So I would just say three out, the first two, that'd be my opinion.
The only advantage I see to two is that the very first year, it's you easing in rather than going straight to the eight percent. So it's.
But on that year, Madam Mayor, what would they see on their bill? Like, literally, it's, it's twenty three cents, or twenty two cents times twelve on their bill for an entire year.
Yeah, all I'm saying is just.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Could I say something else, too?
Yes, yes.
You know, this is super expensive, and I really appreciate the presentation. And it's, all of us here, none of us here want to raise fees or rates on our constituents. But I'm a big fan of maintenance, too. If we don't maintain these lines and these flood control measures, we'll end up paying more in the long run. So I appreciate it, but I, I hope we can hold it as low as possible. And, and I do believe in taking advantage of grants when they're available. If it lowers our tax bill locally, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Council members, Councilman Burns?
I'd say option two.
It's a first read, do we have to vote on it tonight?
No, they're just looking for, they're looking for direction. As I read it, you want a decision so that you can come back in October, correct?
That's correct.
And then we would vote on it in November, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
May I, may I ask, is there a scenario in between two and three that is more of an even kind of base? Or no, these are the ones that you guys kind of came up with?
We wanted to give examples of high, low. There may be some pragmatism of where we fall in reality.
I'm just looking at our current economic state, guys, and we're probably not going to be pulling any money from the government anytime soon. They're getting into some pretty big pickles in Washington State. They're way over leveraged, and they're heavily dependent on the federal government, just like we're heavily dependent on the state government. And it doesn't look like they're playing very well. So I don't know if, depending on grants, is going to be the best idea, but I'm just saying.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I mean, it's never safe. We, grants aren't guaranteed, right? Never are they guaranteed. So, I mean, I'd, I'd like to save as much money as I can, but I'd probably pitch number one out. Just wipe that, because between one and two, there's no discernible difference. And then, you know, three's something we can fall back on if we get into trouble. And, you know, we can really have a hard conversation about that. But, I mean, I liked number one because it was the cheapest, but number two is an annual average of one penny a month more, so. And if we're relying less on the grants and more on the other stuff, then, yeah. And we, we take our, we take our lightest hit, you know, the first year on that, so.
Excuse me, if I may clarify, just, just to make, just to make sure, scenario one and two both assume grants?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman Cock.
Say worst case scenario on three. What would our borrowing capacity look like if we had to go into debt? I mean, I, I know that's not here, but.
Hard to answer right now. I mean, basically, I mean, cities our size, all throughout the state, depend on grants. And think of grants as, they're just a way to redistribute different tax dollars, okay? TIB is completely funded by three percent of the gas tax. And, and so when you go for TIB grants, that's how you redistribute that gas tax to priorities throughout the state and various cities. And, you know, the reality is, you know, if we didn't get TIB and federal grants for our street system that we do fairly successfully, you know, we'd just simply defer that maintenance because we, we wouldn't have our local tax dollars enough to keep up with it. So, you know, it's a pretty normal course of business for cities with very active engineers and them pursuing those grants. I've done this for thirty three years, and I, I, I've always managed to get them. I don't get everything I get, but what happens is, is that you wait till you can, because that's really the only way you can afford it. Our grant, our grant percentage, we get eighty percent of a particular project typically. Our grant, our grant percentage, we get 80% of a particular project typically in grants. And, and we would just not be able to keep up the pace that this town and other active towns keep without that redistribution of tax dollars, basically, that's what it is, to those communities. So if we don't get grants to re, for these stormwater projects or other projects we have, or we can't combine projects with other funding sources, and that includes sewer systems and water systems and all that as well, basically, you run into a deferred maintenance cycle, because there's no other way to handle it. And that's what you, well, you'll hear in various documentaries and stuff about the infrastructure crisis across the U.S., because we are marching towards that, but we're, different communities are being successful at replacing what's necessary and making everything else last as long as it can, so you get the biggest bang for the buck out of that investment, because you can't, just can't turn around and pay for everything. Not much unlike owning a house, okay? So, so that's kind of that situation. So really, the, if, if we're going to make progress on these projects and others, we're going to make the assumption that we're going to be able to leverage grants, sometimes at a faster rate than others. And if we go into a more competitive grant process, where there's kind of what I call spreading that peanut butter less, then we're going to do fewer projects, but we will still make progress towards what our most important needs are, and, and that's how this business works.
Good words, thank you. Councilman Loy?
I, I've listened to government, listened to government, drives me nuts. So we're going to do this, these projects, and you figure this is where we're going to be in 10 years. How far done are we going to be in 10 years? Are we going to be 100% done, so we quit worrying about it and just maintain it? Or is it, uh-oh, project number two, we've got another 10 years going, uh, we've got 20 years going? Where, where are we going to be in 10 years?
Yeah, it, again, these are going to be a living document that we'll have to revisit annually. And can we be successful with each project? Is another priority bump one of these projects out of, out of the way? That's to be determined. I prefer it to be flexible as we move through this, but starting with a good, solid list, these are legit problems that we have in town that we can potentially take care of in the next 10 years.
So, but is, is the goal to, not true, but generally, have everything caught up to snuff?
Correct, yes.
I'm going to write that down, as a promise, I'll be back to see you.
Depends on what the state says, right?
Yeah, yeah. That's the, definitely the intention.
Thank you.
If I can add one thing, too, we actually have 20 years' worth of projects listed, and, you know, like I was telling the maintenance staff, this is like your, your Christmas wishlist. Get everything down, put it down, because people turn over, nobody knows, you know, what their problems are. So this is your chance to put it in print, so that anybody can pick up this document and figure out what those projects are, especially, they're talking about opportunity costs, absolutely, if you're going to go do a road project, hey, this was on the list, let's do it now. So just something to keep in mind when you're looking at the plan and budgeting for all this.
And that has been done within our community, we have done that. Our public works has, they, I think that's what you were trying to say, that if there's a bridge, or a road, or a sidewalk, or whatever, that needs to be replaced, if there's a culvert there, we do replace it, it's calculated into the cost. So TIB picks it up or whatever. All right, so, Councilman Henderson, I'm sorry, he was, he was first.
Thank you. So, as Mr. Bullock was saying, you know, there, there is deferred maintenance and deferred projects, and it happens all the time. I, I work in this industry, there's a lot of projects that we just don't get done, right? So if we can, if, like, moving forward on this plan, on the financial side of it, if we can be very realistic about, like, you know, because oftentimes, we'll see rate increases, but then the project won't happen for whatever reason, and then it's, as Councilman Lavaca said in a meeting one time, it's not like the rates will ever go down, right? So it's like, oh, well, we're not going to do that project, so we're going to, you know, do what Arlington does and drop it down to $7, right? That's just not going to happen. So if we can, and obviously, you guys have been doing a feasibility study on all of this, and, you know, knowing what we need, taking a more conservative approach to what we're looking at, as far as, you know, what projects can we defer? You know, as, as you said, it was the wishlist, right? We, we get that, too, right? We, everything we ever wanted, and then, and then we throw, they throw together these figures, what, what we really need and what we don't really need moving forward over these 10, because I, what I'd really like to not do is raise the rates, have them super high, and then, and then, as Councilman Loy said, then, some of the projects aren't done, but the rates are high, so...
Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you. It sounds like two seems like it's kind of be the best bet. It gives us the fresh start at the lowest rate, and it also gives us an opportunity to see if we have any, anything kind of coming down the line. I think, just like you said, with the projects with, you know, the two full-time FTEs and then bringing on more FTEs, are those really going to be necessary as we go down, or can they actually combine, things like that? So, yeah, I don't know. If, if you're looking for a general consensus, it seems like two is toward the general consensus.
If you're looking for a general consensus, I would agree with Councilman Henderson and Councilman Lavaca in regards to scenario two. I also don't fully support li, relying fully on grants. I think that that can put the city in a sticky situation. However, I don't also think that scenario three is feasible for our taxpayers. I don't want to raise taxes or raise our rates, if any at all, at any point in the near future. I've, I've currently had people coming to me and talking to them, and I have an individual in my ward that just had to get rid of his internet, because he can't afford it anymore, and is on a fixed income, is retired on a fixed income, and is looking at other outlets to just be able to go have lunch somewhere to try to offset his, his own costs, right? The cost of living is getting high for a lot of people that have created what they thought would be, you know, a, a good livable wage to live out their life here in our wonderful city. And unfortunately, with the cost of living and all the increases and stuff, that, that's been a really hard struggle, and I think that that's a reality we need to consider. And so, I mean, for looking at this right now with the scenarios in front, I would, I would say my voice would be for option two.
Councilwoman Kesty, I see you shaking your head, you concur?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Cock, he's not here. Two is fine. And so, the only, I'm, the only one I haven't really heard from is Henderson, you, because you've kind of, which one do you like?
I went off the tangent there, but yeah, I think, I think, leading off with two, I'd like to see the lowest increase to start with.
Councilman Loy, can you live with that?
Number one.
You want number one, okay. Well, we have, we have a six to one, then, for number two. So, let's move forward with that. Yeah. So let's move forward with that, number two. Anything else that you need from us at this point?
No, I think that, that's very helpful, thank you.
Great presentation, I really appreciate the work that you've put into this, and also the way that it was presented. It became quite clear what we need to do and what our options were, so it was very nice to have that, that opportunity to debate that. Councilman Lavaca?
Just going to say out of curiosity, do you guys break that down as far as, like, this, how, this is how much of the consulting fee went to the stormwater aspect of it?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Oh, if we're paying to have the, the stormwater assessment done and then brought it before us, how much that costs?
As far as including in all these budget numbers, is that what you're asking? Generally, we do, although I'm not sure that that was necessarily part of this. Sometimes we have a line item, and therefore, when you redo this, he says it's a living document, you may want to redo it six years, 10 years. So that's certainly a good point, and I'm not sure we have that in there this time, so we can, we can add that in.
And then it's included in this one, as we're doing the comp plan for this setup? Are we doing the stormwater aspect for the comp plan on this one?
Yeah, so there has been an element, I think, that has been included in the, the general comprehensive plan.
Okay. And then, so on, I guess on that one, it would be just separate for, like, I was wondering how much we actually put into developing the stormwater assessment of what we need and, and going forward?
How much our contract is?
Yeah.
That's a good question. We have a...
150?
Yeah, I want to say that, and I don't think we, I want to say we've got a good 30, 40,000 left, so, and we haven't spent what...
Yeah, we're under budget on this, this project.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because we were, we were looking at, like, how much we're putting into it, and if we do in four years, bring another consultant in, but we got, like, what, 80, 8,500 homes around there, and we're talking about moving at a dollar a year, something like that, I'm like, wondering how much, the consulting fees we're paying when we're looking at how much we're actually lifting the rate up? I know it's compound interest, and I know it's over, over a 10-year span, but if we're bringing in consultants every few years, I mean, I'm just curious.
It's a very good point, and, and we'll make sure to include that as a line item, because it's a very smart thing to plan for, because it's not cheap, I get it, so, good thing.
All right. Okay. Thank you, thank you so much, Stacy, for being here, thank you, Kyle. Okay. Moving on, then, to last item before executive session, and that is new business, and we have ordinance 210225. It's the chip grant reimbursement for eligible fees, this is a first read. So, no action tonight, or do you want action tonight?
No action necessary tonight. If council wants to take action, that's always an option, but definitely not required. I'd like to just unpack what this is, and hear any questions from the council, and do my best to answer those for you. So the chip grant, I'll just start with that. It's a state grant from the Department of Commerce called Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program. So what it basically does is allow developers who are developing affordable housing, if they have a city sponsor for their project, meaning a city that will put in a grant application. It allows them to get reimbursed for sewer connections, water connections, stormwater connections. So it has to be utility-related, and it also applies to basically infill development, sewer line extensions for that, upsizing lines. In our case, it's just sewer and stormwater, so we don't have a water utility. But if we're going to look at doing anything with this program, that's really what we're focused on. This particular program has a, in order to look at connection fees, that's where a lot of expense is for developers. Connecting to utilities, you pay a connection fee, you basically buy into our utility. So you pay one large lump sum, depending upon your number of connections. In order to consider waiving those for a project that might get one of these grants, and then allowing the state to reimburse that grant 100%, we have to pass an ordinance that would allow for that to occur. So that's what this is, and the backstory on this is that we were approached by Family Promise. They were, actually, this was recommended by the county to them as a potential grant that might assist their project. We also reached out to RJ Group, and I didn't reach out to YMCA, because their project isn't far enough along. But these are other projects that are, have been talking, and had, two of them have applied for 1590 funds to see if there'd be any interest. RJ Group didn't have any interest, but you can put in as many applications as a city, as you have projects that are eligible. For a project to be eligible, 25% of the units in a project have to be affordable, meaning they have to be 80% area median income or less. So the Family Promis project would qualify, but the way we wrote this ordinance is for any project now or in the future that we might submit a grant for. And the reason why it's advantageous to have this ordinance in place is because it helps in the grant scoring, and it also allows the city to tap into more state funds that we would then provide back to the developer, essentially. So we're not waiving their fees, that's really, the state technically wants us to waive fees, we're not super comfortable with that. So we are looking here at, basically, using the state's money to reimburse the fees that would be paid by the developers upfront. So this helps with affordable housing, would help with the council's affordable housing goals in the new comprehensive plan, if we're able to get some of these grants and help support some projects in the community. So that's why this ordinance is here before you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Would that apply, I know, I guess we don't have anything active right now, but for somebody like Habitat for Humanity, would that help with their connection fees?
It could, it definitely could apply to one of their projects, if they did that in town.
Councilwoman Kesty?
I'm trying to find the words to adequately describe what I'm thinking in my head. I get a little bit nervous as far as the, the city side of it. Not so much in the sense of it, a developer, because they have their, their plan, research, this is what they do. I get a little bit nervous for us, because I think about, like, the Burlington First Step Center, or things like that, where they didn't have all of their ducks in a row, and then they needed to go get funding, and, and would we, I just, it worries me for nonprofits or things to be applying for us, and that we're taking care of the grant. So, I don't know, I, I have a lot of hesitation with this.
Sure. If it helps at all, there's no money out from the city on this. So we're helping with the grant application, but we're, we are not waiving fees in the traditional sense of just saying, you don't pay us, and we hope to get a grant. We are only reimbursing developers' fees if the grant is successful, and if that grant is approved by the city council. So there are multiple steps where the city does not lose any funding. It's the state's money essentially going to the developer, just through the city.
So then, would these different entity, or they're applying for it, they would give the money to us regardless, and then they would be reimbursed if that worked out for them?
The way it would work is that, and I'm about to potentially do this, for Family Promise's project, we would put, open up the application, so we, the city, are the applicant. So we go to the state's website, we open up the application, then we make the developer a collaborator with us on that, and they upload a whole lot of their project information. We haven't waived any fees, even if we pass this. We submit all that to the state, the state looks at it, the state decides if they want to fund that grant application. If they decide they do, then that comes back to the city council for consideration. And you can decide, yes, we want to see that happen, or no, we don't. If you decide you want to see that happen, then what we would do is, the amount of money we've applied for is equivalent to whatever we're able to ask for from the state to reimburse the eligible fees that the developer has already paid to us. So we would pay the developer back then after we got the grant, that's how that would work. So the city's not out any money, the city's kind of a, a middle person in this whole process, it's the way the state designed it.
So how much work on the front end and how much work on the back end, once the grant's received, for the city? Because that's what it sounds like, is that the city does the majority of the work here.
There is some work, I don't know that it's a majority, have not done this before, so we're learning as we go. Once we have this ordinance, ordinance in place, we wrote it very broadly on purpose, because we could write one of these for each project, and that would be very time-consuming for staff and for council. So we chose to make this really broad, so it would apply to any project that we got a chip grant for in the future. So with that in mind, that's a streamlined piece. And so what we do is, we go to the state, we're learning the program, we make the application, we allow the developer to collaborate with us on that, they upload all their information. We need to just make sure that's 100% accurate, we submit it, it comes back. There is some administration on our end, and I don't have a full, you know, full lens on that yet, but we're, we'll, deal with that as we get to it. I think a lot of that's going to be on the developer end, that's typically how we, how we handle it.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Councilman Loy?
Is this thing you're talking about doing, is just, is that similar to what we just did with Janicki, pretty much?
Similar in the concept that we applied for a grant on their behalf, yes, in partnership with them. So it's similar, except that went to the county, this goes to the state.
But it's, the idea is the same.
Concept is similar, yes.
Close enough, thank you.
I'm not sure, Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you very much. So on that, let's say you've got four houses you're building, and one of those is going to be that low income, so you got that 25% threshold. Is that impact fees waived for all four houses, or is it just that one? And then, can you give me a sample of, like, what that would cost?
Yeah, it's for, I'm pretty sure it's just for the ones that are affordable, in this case. But, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the case.
And then what would that, what would the cost of that one?
Off the top of my head, I, I can't fully give you that. I know for Family Promise, looking at their project, and all of the units qualify, it's $9,900 for connection fees.
Okay. And that's for 14 units?
I believe so, yeah, for single family. Now, Beatty Square, RJ Group's project, I looked at that, is 1.3 million for connection charges on sewer. But it's a much bigger project, but that's the whole project, so we would have to isolate how many were affordable. We didn't get to that point in discussion.
I do, I do tend to agree a bit with... I do, I do tend to agree a bit with Joellen on just being careful with, with grants, for sure. I know that it seemed like we have, in the comp plan, a surplus of affordable houses above the AMI, not a surplus, we all know that we don't have a huge amount, but what they're asking for is like seven hundred and forty more homes in the affordable range. And so, if a developer's building one to four, I mean, that's a lot of houses. And so, I, I would hope that we raised the wages, or that we see the wages increase, so that people aren't in that AMI level, and the AMI maybe go down to seventy and below or something. All right. Thanks.
Councilman Burns?
Sorry, Mayor. I need to correct myself. It does apply to market rate housing if twenty-five percent of the units are affordable, so, or more.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My view on basically any grant that is available, I prefer, especially if they're going to be going to an entity outside of the city itself, that we'd be spending minimal cost on it, or passing on that cost to the entity that it benefits. But realistically, the state or the federal government sets aside these funds, and they're going somewhere for somebody, so why not have the opportunity for those dollars to come here? Because then that means that Family Promise, or the RJ Group, has more money in their pocket to spend on something else in the community. So, anytime we're able to bring money in, that's a good thing. Should we be reliant on grants? No. No, we should always be cautious about that. But if this is an opportunity for organizations in the area to get money that would have otherwise gone to Tacoma, Seattle, the other side of the state, why not have it come here?
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. So, looking, looking this over, I, I get that there's no cost to the city, and it's eighty percent or lower, right?
Correct.
And what is eighty percent for Seadrug Woolley?
I would have to go back and look at a chart. I don't remember off the top of my head.
I don't remember either, that's why I asked. So, the, the dollar, they'll reimburse us, or they'll reimburse the developer, so the developer actually has to have the capital to start this up, right?
The developer would still pay us like they normally would. We would apply for the grant. If we are successful, then the state will give us money, and we will give that money to the developer.
Okay. I, and, so, the money that the Department of Commerce is reimbursing us with, where, where do they get those tax dollars from?
I don't know the exact source, but they have a budget to do this work, and I could find out for the second read, if you'd like.
Okay. I, I just, I, I take a little bit of issue, and I know that we have other funding sources for these different projects. I, I do take a little bit of issue with the, when we're talking about, you know, raising our sewer rates and all these other rates for all, all of our people that live here, and then there's these programs like this that help us very rapidly densify our city with all the traffic issues we have and everything else, and the school districts. It kind of gives me an uneasy feeling, knowing that, you know, people can just, people can just come in and get reimbursed when, you know, the other developers who are, you know, doing it the, the old-fashioned way, their, their projects have to survive on their own merit, and not on, you know, basically a cheat code, if you will, for rapid development. So, but, I'm really actually kind of hesitant about this whole program.
But going back to a discussion that you and I had, Charlie, actually, this type of program can be beneficial to the city in that the state is requiring us to meet certain, a number of homes that have certain AMIs. And this would be one tool that we would have in our toolbox in order to appease the city's, or not the city, the state's demands.
That is correct. Yeah. And, and in the future, after our comprehensive plan's approved, we will need to be submitting reports to the state on affordable housing and our targets, and whether we're, what, what different tools we're using to meet those AMI targets, and show how many units we've created and all the rest. So, this would be a piece of that puzzle.
Madam Mayor?
Okay. Go ahead. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you. Yeah, I, to clarify, I was saying that if, I believe if I understood Joellen right, Councilwoman Kestie, that somebody applies for the grant, and then they go for, put money down, and then start their project hoping to get that grant approved, and it doesn't come in. And that's one of a few grants that maybe don't come in, and then all of a sudden, they're, they're kind of backwards on their project. So, that, that would be something that I, I would be on caution for as well. And then, again, that dependency on the grant, like you were saying, we have to appease the, the state government, and they're not going to come in here with police and arrest us all if we don't. They're going to hold the purse strings from us. And so, what they're going to do is, like Bill was talking about earlier, yeah, we always get our grants, it's what we heavily depend on, so we mainly, when we plan out these budgets, we depend on these grants. If they don't come in, we push it, or we, we have to defer our, our maintenance, and it costs us a lot. So, that is a bit of a runaround we're going through right now. The state's not doing that with the federal government, as we know. So, the state's going to be in a pickle, like we would be in a pickle, by, if we decided to just not do it, right, and say, no, we're not going to play by your rules at all. So, we are, we are looking at a headwind here. I don't know if anybody sees it, so we just be cautious.
Charlie, maybe you can actually explain a little bit better, because, so my understanding is, is that the paperwork that, that is submitted by the service groups and the agencies that are applying for this CHIP grant, they have to submit paperwork, and the, the state will determine if they qualify based upon what kind of funding that they have, and if they're meeting all the requirements that they look at to make the project complete. Is that correct?
So, so as a collaborator on the grant application, they will be doing a lot, almost all of the heavy lifting on putting material into the portal that is the grant application itself. We'll still review it all, we, because it's got our name on it, and we want to make sure it's, you know, everything we agree with. But, yes, that they would do most of the heavy lifting on putting that together, in part because they have better information about the project than we do.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilwoman Diamond, did you have a question?
Oh, I was just going to state that I'm, I'm actually not a hundred percent comfortable with this whole process as it is. If the, the Commerce has this much money to keep rolling back in and funding you grants, the state should maybe reassess where their budget is going and what's going on there, and that the taxes are incredibly high in this state, and it's pushing people into these income levels and pushing people down. And we're creating more and more of these projects, providing more and more grants to fund everything. That's becoming this, this crazy rotating cycle. And so, at some point, you have to just say, this is ridiculous, and that's what this is coming to, as far as I'm concerned. You, you become heavily dependent on the state, and then you have no voice, and that's hard. And so, you know, that's where, that's, that's my take on this. I, I would like to sit down and read through this a little bit more before I made any decision, but it just makes me a little bit uncomfortable.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Okay. Thank you. If, if we were to consider moving forward with this ordinance, we, we would be conducting some of the administrative work, correct? We, our, some of our staff would be doing some of the work to some capacity, right?
Yes. I've been doing some of the work hands-on, and then, you know, down the road, there'd be some grant accounting work to do on the back end with finance.
If we could, like, if we were to move forward with it, I would highly suggest, if it, if it does pass in the future, I would highly suggest that we come up with a dollar figure of a non-refundable, you will pay us this to process, just like if you were applying for an apartment. You know what I mean? Like, if it costs us a thousand dollars in labor, or fifteen hundred or five hundred, you know, but year, year hourly, you know, rate for what you do, and then, and then Kelly's staff, and just to make sure that we're getting everything we possibly can, because whoever would be benefiting from this would be getting a massive, massive discount.
Okay. Councilman Cock?
Yeah, just a quick anecdote. I was in a, a line at Food Pavilion, and I'm a terrible eavesdropper. It's from a result of being a reporter in, in the day. And I listened to this woman who was older than me, who was, I know. What was, she was complaining about, to anybody who would listen, she couldn't afford food, food prices continue to go up, she could no longer afford her rent, her social security did not cover her basic needs. At a North Star meeting, they came up, and I don't have the exact figure, but I think in Skagit County, the level of affordable housing was point oh-four percent. If we don't start doing something, and this is an example of a tool, and we can, we can make it so it works for us, then we're going to end up with encampments in our town. We need to deal with smart ways to deal with affordable housing, because I'll tell you, I, my guess is there's a high percentage in this town who can't afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilman Burns?
Well, I will definitely agree with the sentiments of Councilmember Cock, but I also agree with figuring out what it's going to cost the city, because realistically, it doesn't make sense for us to be out to benefit the organization. If we're going to do some legwork, let them cover it.
Okay. So, this is a first read. You're not looking for any kind of a motion. This will come back then?
We'll look, bring it back on the tenth of September.
Okay. All right. Okay. If there's nothing else regarding that, then we will be moving into executive session. This is for discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation under RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one I. It is eight forty. We'll give it fifteen minutes, so we'll be back at eight fifty-five. So, if not, I will come out, and I will extend the time. So, we'll be back at eight fifty-five. So we'll be back at 8:55. All right, it is 8:56 and the council is back from executive session. There was no action taken. If, is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, everybody have a wonderful evening and we are adjourned.